The consent portion at about thirty-one feet. First up is good in the order. Any council members have anything to the good of the order? If not, anything, let's see, is there any, are there any questions on consent agenda items that you want? Look, wouldn't you want to pull it that we can answer perhaps briefly or? Okay, so we'll just go ahead and move on to our first discussion item. Proposed policy on field and facility rental with our city administrator. Hello, good evening, council, members of the community. So what you have in the packet is a revised. Facilities policy, facilities and field rental policy. And then we'll go ahead and bring it up. So last time I came to council, I had just included, oh my gosh, there's a terrible spelling error on this one. I know. So, yeah, I clerk when you get to that, just right past. So when we had this over council the last time, it was just on the field rental part, does that? Policy, the facilities portion is all existing policy. And that we've had for a number of years, but with the document that you have in your council packet does. Tonight is it takes both of them and puts them both in one place. As well as includes at the back the exhibits, which are all of those additional policies. That we have either had for a long time or recently implemented like the concessions policy. So everything is in one place now. So if we go to this document, the first part of it. So the introduction page is the same as last time. And didn't make any change, it just, it just has purpose and scope, E terms, non discrimination and non endorsement. Which we had in the existing, to slightly different versions of them. And to some degree, we had in the existing facility rental policies. So we kept those and then what I've done from there is add all of the facility rental policies, slight tweaks. To more grammar and existing practice for those policies. So those were in. And then all the exhibits, like the facility rental fee, all of those are in the back. And then getting to the page down clerk to where we come back to the field policies. Which are on, keep going, they should be on page eight of the document. So on this first page, one of the things that I heard from the first council session on this was that. There was a concern about how the River View School District was prioritized. Had initially had the River View District prioritized as third on the list. We're thinking about prioritization of field scheduling. Based on the fact that I forget the meeting, I moved it down from page to seven. Which would mean the fields would really.
Sorry, you said seven?
Oh, I did page down, I highlighted where I made changes. Do you want to stop and go thing by thing or do you? Yeah, so what this will do is this first change. Is really prioritize the leads, so youth, adult. Youth, Duvall residents, adult. So really prioritizing sports usage. For non-school district events and then school districts after. So that's the first change from the last. Anyone have any thoughts on the change?
And I made just clarification, Duval residents, that Duval city property or just people else?
So we have, if you go, see where the. The key terms are, we have, we have both, we have a Duval resident, which is a person living within Duval city limits. And then further defined as an individual who's primary resident or business addresses within the city limits. But we also included district resident in case we need to do tiebreaks. I think for me, I was wondering what everyone thought about. I like how it's been lowered because I think it was too high before, but possibly. I'm trying to get like this war moving River View school district programs above the groups that don't meet the residency criteria of at least forty percent Duval residents. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that or if everyone else is good with it in seven. Councilmember Allen, I would support that, I think that's a reasonable comeback. With the goal, I think we talked about before that. We really want to foster a closer relationship and potentially that would change the priorities in the future if we could have, you know. Councilmember, sir?
Think that also reinforces. The comment that Carol made at the last meeting, since both would incentivize the school district to potentially be more of a goal with. Their facilities, so we're prioritizing them a little higher and hopefully there will be a return on, or at least a conversation around. Equity there as well. Behind that change.
Anyone else? Councilmember Isaac?
So when we prioritize this, we have four about the regional, this is one question I have is, is there any type of. Check to make sure that they dissolve their facilities before they have a policy release? Because if they have a facility that they're not using. And you have a built facility, tiebreaker, and to bring that into it. But in the tiebreaker process, should make sure that they're using a facility that they already have, faithful by their.
Anyone else?
I'm really changing. So sorry, is there a way to do that? And everyone agreed with it, no one said you have to do it or not.
Yeah, I'm happy. So the way it's structured now is, well, and. I will turn over to Director Lenashevsky as well, at the placement, it's at. We wouldn't need to actually use the school district very often as a tiebreaker because the usage would be largely arable. With youth and abilities, or you can get to the school district. And so. Now is there's. No below that.
No, with the proposal, move it, it's one of the, once you move it, it's going to all that. If everyone agrees with moving number seven to number three possibly, I think what I was kind of hearing. You know, a couple, and you do have.
Oh, right, so meaning that if we change where it's at. Yeah, I, I think it probably would cause that issue. And to just to clarify, I was proposing, what about moving it to number five, not free where it was before, just so that. What would bubble over these school district programs are youth and adult leagues that don't meet the residency criteria. Of forty percent, but yeah, and you know, you bring up a good point and I don't know. You have fun, I mean, I don't know how you would, because would you do that to everyone as well and say, have you really tried everywhere or tied your own resources in a school district team?
It sounds like number. I've been, idea is just making sure like. Soccer team is going to come practice here because it's sixty bucks instead of keeping a janitor or person staff at one point, right? But that would be like a check off. Yeah, they, their fields are full, they need to put one. It happens so frequently, it's not a big deal, but it'd be a check off. It could be a deep sorry.
You want to go ahead?
I mean, if we move them up, it's just an offer on end of that, through the school districts. As long as they have availability there. And it gives, it gives staff the authority and the ability to look at the regulations and say, hey. Is there still booked? Yes or no? Yes.
So just to clarify, are you asking, are you asking staff if like, do we need to add that, like as a comma? Provided their fields are, or their facilities are full. The councilmember Allen?
I want to clarify too, when I talk about really useful district programs, I'm talking about official River View school district programs, not like a feeder program or, yeah. Something like that, loosely related to our district, but not actual. Okay, I think so, right, yeah.
So when I looked at other city programs. That seemed to be the intent, and it was the intent as it wrote, is not kind of loosely affiliated with the school district, it's official school district. Everyone seems to be good with moving River View school districts to number five, is everyone good with that addition of some like wording to add? You know, provided their facilities are, I don't know how you, I'm sure you guys can come up with a way to word that better, but. Yeah, mayor.
So I was going to say, moving into number five also prioritizes. In-town people over people that may be able to bring economic development and part of the point of our policy. And the field use in general is to, quote unquote, facilitate. Economic development and people coming to our businesses in town. So I think I just want to point that out that that's been a significant source of discussion. Previously, and so moving it to number five would definitely be a reversal of that course. So just, it's not a big deal, I'm just. Pointing out this information.
Councilmember, you heard?
See, in your report, help if you have. For a, for a high school team to request field space, I think it was last year, the year before with my baseball playoff. Something where the boys being needed in space and make a couple of kind of. And it was fine because they're usually pretty early, they got a school degree, so it's been once in my. And you're not that I don't think some of the programs should come out, you know, they've got a, you know, JV, R C, C team trying to all practice on one field and. Before C team can get about this much space, so they should, I would say, even run to the field, practice, run. But, you know, they only call. Yeah, but next on that, I find that important.
Councilmember, or, sorry, Marcer.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I mean, I, I definitely to the mayor's point of view, and it's sort of two of the opposing views. As one is the taxpayers or the family for the taxpayer to back the funders of the old student conjunction and then the economic development, I think based on. Director Lenashevsky's sort of feedback, which right now is more than education. Something we could obviously revisit. On the sort of the secondary just topic, just to close that out in terms of visualization, I think the, the. No problems with adding the denim, but you know, again, it's, it's basically on phase, so I don't know how much value you'd add, you know, they're going to send the afternoon, but. It sounds like it's a minimal, but. Whether, whether or not we adjust it, it's not necessarily going to affect the.
I don't think we're good on that item then. Okay. And then, if we could go to the next page, so I highlighted here. So one of the areas of feedback that we got last time when we brought this to council was. So we want to try to allow for as many folks and teams on field as possible, good ones. To maximize usage. However, the way it was originally written may have disadvantaged. Particular sports that really do need the whole field, whether because of the way it's played, like the cross. Or because of safety and the age of the players like baseball, who can't put a multiple team on a single field. Particularly older boys playing baseball. And so Director Lenashevsky and I try to come up with language that. Finds a balance between limiting overuse of the field, but also providing as much. As we can to the community in terms of offering the fields to, to teams that have multiple age groups or leagues with multiple teams or groups of multiple teams. So this was our effort to meet those goals. So the first is we added language here around not equal access, but equitable representation of sports activities on the field. So that we wouldn't have fields solely comprised of a single sport and that the public works department could look at. Multiple sports activities and find an equitable dispersment on the fields and then. The below highlighted portion is trying to. Indicate that there are some sports where safety and age would mean that there would be a single team on the field and that shouldn't work. As a disadvantage.
Councilmember, I just want to say, I really like this, thank you for putting that into policy, kind of what had been raised. I have one tiny thing, I've said baseball as an example, but I wonder if softball. Flash softball might also be there to be gender fair.
Yes, as a softball mom, I appreciate that. Councilmember, I take them.
I like that idea as too, I'm thinking from a person renting the field for seconds. If I, if the city is saying, hey, I got another team, I'll come here and we believe that you can share a field. My counter is going to be one of the, they have. Is it, is that a split between two things indirectly? So. So I would say back on the topic, prior to that question. I would, I would leave that to the coach, like if they know. You fifteen girls that have a field, I did that to them and say, hey, because one field is all we can, or one team can be on field, I would leave that to their discretion. No, no.
To have that as an example.
And I would say that, I would want them to say like, we can't stop two teams on the field. Which is out of our control, it's great. Putting, my experience of splitting. Field use between two different teams run by two separate clubs is not going to be good. You could flip the rate, but it's too complicated. We leave discussion to a club who rents and stuff their teams on it, that's between us and them, and we only charge for the one hour rent. Or whatever the new law will be, if we don't track, and that's part of the issue in all honesty too, is. When teams come and they bring, you know, five teams, it's just a lot of traffic that the property is built for, increases the rent pay. Like we want kids to play and we all know we need more fields to play on, but I don't think. Doing it at a cost of, it's quite wild, you've ever gone and walk around, jerking some of those sessions, like. Want kids to be active, but we're getting to a point on a lot of, you know, liability and a lot of things going on and I know we're going to grow the park, which is great, but it's. So that's just the hope that you can lead some of that.
Councilmember, and then, yeah.
Back to Hagg would argue to that, that council, other thing that, you know, their, their, the fee is really, it's more not charged by the square foot of the field. It's around facilities, so whether it's half the field or full field, it's the final, and you're getting quicker. I guess even when you're coming back with that, but. In response, but again, putting the time constraint on it makes it a little more. Digestible, I guess, and valuable, because you're really paying for the use, and there is a variety of the three.
Man, you know, in the future too, and we do need to look at. Potentially number of people on the field at any given time, being a higher rate, having a daughter that did cheer this year, number one. Football players with heavy equipment on a very expensive turf that anyone given time. While the girls were practicing cheer was a lot. And that's definitely one of the big. Or turf, so. Totally support the, the one group, one cost. But in the future, you know, as we develop this and look forward towards our first turf replacement, et cetera. We should probably also be looking at. Potentially differential based on the number of people on the field, the type of equipment that's on the field and the wear and tear that those fields get. And perhaps have a little more proportional rate in the, in the long run to help those fields be a little more sustainable and also. The leagues are large, there is a lot of matching, many coming to the final and see threes. So when you look at the sheer number of players, for example, in the football and cheerery. Those costs distributed out over the entire team are minimal. Very minimal, and I would say the same goes for Little League as well, so. That's, you know, a huge portion of the. For balance.
Anything else on this? I thought it looked good, so I think we can move on. All right, and then we'll just go down a little bit. So the one thing, we did add language here again around what our intent is when. When leagues and groups come to run the field is that, you know, we want to limit reuse while making sure that we can promote flexibility. The B above that wasn't changed is in blue is also highlighting the parking concerns, fountain park. Which will be a factor in how many teams we can put. You know, five Kiwi teams and. You know, another team playing it all at the same time in that location, there just isn't parking for it, so well, parking will be a factor. In being able to say yes to certain requests or no. So those are the changes that we made from last time. Is there anything else that didn't get captured that you would like to see when we bring this back again? Not, oh, councilmember.
Do we need to bring it back? Like we've all agreed on the changes tonight, can we, just make a motion when you pass. Oh, yeah, we can't, but we could potentially do it in. If we leave it in the final format and reprint it, that just might give the league some boost, even though there's crap, not to leave any comments, but it's, you know, more final day. It's getting out of more particular. Okay, it's simple or not, but do stand more time.
Councilmember Allen, so I got here kind of like, so potentially this was already discussed, but I had asked a question, just I wanted to spend overview of, you know, what kind of feedback we got when this was provided to the different groups that use the field. And I just want to say thank you for that, and I, I did hear that there was definitely a meeting with the football group, and I'm just curious if there was any feedback. From them about possible changes or anything like that.
So earlier today, I sent back a chart of the responses that we got, so. The P T O S working group did meet with the sports teams, but there was nothing about the rental policy that came back. And then Director Lenashevsky had one conversation from Little League about it, and that's the far only feedback we've gotten. But there's, I mean, there's really no rush on this, so we could, assuming that council has everything they need in it tonight. I can clean it up, take all the editing out and we could send it as like a final draft and see if we get more feedback. That's councilmember.
You know, beyond the final wordsmith and spell check, whatnot, the only other thing I was going to call it, and I know that there's no. Incentive currently to adjust the fee structure, but is there, was there any fact given to capacity? Without doing any type of adjustment based on either the sport or just to mitigate some of that, again, that might be. Overthinking, something we don't need to do now, but it would. Not necessarily involve it, but at least provide some guidance back to the end of the year, whether it's football across in terms of a field cap, just to, to, to know where in their own fields.
Yeah, what we did is on page thirteen, so. We ended up changing the. Structure for the, the periods of time it can be rented, if you know, a little bit more for.
I'm sorry, station?
Oh, right there, yeah. So we tried to create blocks that were staggered. So that we could get, hopefully, a team off one field before the next team could start.
Down there is the fifteen minutes in there.
Yeah, I mean, this is one way that we tried to figure out without changing the fee structure on. Maximizing use and limiting the parking issue, you know, hard to tell how much it'll. It'll affect kind of the parking situation down there, but that was where we embedded that. Okay. Thank you. So that will move next then to our discussion related to potential changes in policy regarding the public commentary period, again, of course, city administrator. Um, yeah, so I don't have a presentation or anything, we did when we initially made the adjustment. To the public comment period, he said they would bring back to council for a policy conversation on whether the changes that were made met the policy need for the council. I did have an opportunity to talk to Daniel Kenny, the city attorney, as well as two other city attorneys and Ogden Murphy about. The changes that were made because that law firm had suggested the changes to all of the plans. And, you know, if they were working, what was working, what wasn't. So we're the second of their clients to put it back on the council agenda for discussion, so they haven't had many clients revisited. They've had one client, the city of Redmond, actually go one step further and require. That people who want to make public comment have to register online, online platform. So they don't allow people to walk in and do public comment, while they have to be pre-registered. So Redmond actually made the change and then went one step further. There hasn't been a lot of data on this. We had public comment at cultural commission last week. For more than just one place of standing public comment, but other than that, since making the change, we haven't had. A lot of folks online raising their hand to do public comment. Tonight, council all got public comment tonight, bring a public comment. Tonight's the first night where we've had more than one or two emails. So it's certainly ripe for conversation, though I don't know how much data we really have to bring to the table, but we did say we would put it back. And we can continue to put it back on the agenda when council wants to continue the conversation. Yeah, I didn't want to have to go too long without coming back and to see where everybody's at, but I agree that we don't really, we haven't been really doing it long enough to have much, but I think it was important to bring it up tonight and see where everybody's at. Mayor and then councilmember Allen.
Yeah, I was actually in a mayor's meeting and then they are red in today, and they did have a really controversial project in the last few weeks and. I know that they had a lot of public comment, but it seemed to me as well, they're expecting a lot of public comment potentially on the other side this evening because of. Controversial project for some people was approved, but it sounds like it's working pretty well for them to manage their meetings and still facilitate public comment. So I don't know that we, we don't have the level of comment that we will probably ever get to a point of needing to have people register to make sure that that's fine with the image. But I think also with our, being very clear that people can submit. And that we continue to get them. That provides an avenue for books and it's in writing, so they want their public comment to be able to be read and those are included, we posted online. Which I think is actually considerably more transparent than having an audio or a video that somebody has phones or chat, they can look on a document and it's there. And they can read those public comments, so. I feel like so far what we have has been working well, there might be assumptions to rules, but the rules can always be suspended for those things.
Councilmember Allen? Yeah, one of the things that I originally had that.
Yeah, one of the things that I originally had with any method was just the cutting off of. Being able to submit public comments. I think that's new, that right? But yeah. And so I'm just curious, you know, let's just use today, for example, did, were any, um, comments received? After the noon time between now and the meeting?
Uh, yes, we actually received one fifteen minutes ago. So even with us before off that, like those are.
Were there any others received besides that one last?
There was one more that we received, but. Three o'clock, some three, four o'clock, something like that.
Yeah, so I mean, that was my, one of my bigger concerns is just that there are people who are like, oh, I can't get to the meeting, but I wanted to. Make my comment. I can't do it online. I've got people at home and then here are. For my, it's that reason, because they can't even try to get one in at the last minute and cut off at noon. And I, I don't know if there's a good solution, but that definitely was a concern that I had. Um, I don't know if there's any suggestions to address that. And then one other thing I had noticed another city do to kind of help with. Um, not just off topic comments, but comments that don't relate to anything that the city is doing, um, would be, uh. Some cities will say that the comments must, must pertain to city business. Doesn't have to necessarily be something that's on the agenda that night. But it has to pertain to city business and that kind of gives a tool to, you know. Say you're off, you're not speaking about things that have to do with city business, we're gonna have. Um, cut it off. And I, I don't know if we're there yet and. Getting a handle on these type of situations. I don't know how widespread they are, um, but those are two things that I wouldn't mind. You know, maybe the next time, maybe we're not ready to work into it deeper now, but like how to address. Those last minute comments that now people can do at home or other possible solutions. There, come before we go back to you.
So make sure Councilor McAlton and then Mayor gonna have.
Yeah, now, I mean, I think there are some, I won't touch on that one, because we'll talk about it. The mayor may have feedback. The only other one I was gonna raise, and I didn't submit it as a comment, because I thought we were, we'd have an opportunity to discuss, but it was more just a, a question. Um, for the city administrator, the, the clause B is sort of the initial talks about, I mean, the purpose of this policy is and, and, you know. Create framework and then. This is the thing I brought, was gonna discuss at the, at the last meeting, but then further down it says they're just guidelines and they're seems to be, sort of, it seems to be a conflict between. These are policies and these are guidelines that are discretionary, which seems contrary to me. They're either policy or they're discretionary guidelines. They shouldn't be one or another. And then that fed into. The amendment of the rules. If they're, if they're guidelines, I'm not concerned about staff making changes to the policy without sort of a feedback. Although I think there should be some defined timeline within six months or six weeks or a week, to inform council of the changes. Um, but I am, I, I'm more concerned about the lack of transparency if it's policy versus guideline. So that was just something that, general feedback in terms of as you read that, it does seem to say both, and it would be helpful for me to understand if they're. If they're sort of prescriptive policy. I think it's a guidelines except where required by Washington state law, which is very kind of loose and goofy language to me. So that would be my.
So I think you're referring to the public records policy?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Are we jumping around? Me too. Okay, so it's a public comment policy, the council review. So, um, okay, so I'm, we're jumping back. Uh, the policy, yeah, the cutoff piece was the other one I, but Jennifer covered it. That can be adjusted simply by role and move it potentially to the next meeting or still posting online, but not having them available for the meeting, but there are ways to do that. Apologies from.
No worries.
Actually, that's exactly what I was going to reiterate is that, um, just because somebody doesn't need a, need the deadline for the meeting that evening. Does not mean it's not a submission of public comment for the council meeting and that should be included in the next packet. Um, so. Um, I think that, uh, the world. People that are providing public comment for adults, they can subscribe to the website. Um, I assume that everyone's responsible, um, and can read deadlines and. And make their decision on whether or not they can get stuff in time. Um, and if they can't, um, that's understandable. We all have issues that come up. Um, but it's just having a deadline for submission for one meeting does not preclude. That submission and that inclusion in the next meeting's public comment, um, which is. Not uncommon as long as it's not a public carry. It's, public comment is never closed. So in fact, public comment moves beyond just submitting oral comments for the record, um, and it's, goes to the emails that we all receive from people who listen to that. Um, so we are open and accessible and transparent, and all those emails that are submitted to the council are also subject of law enforcement. Um, by a very simple form, so, um, everything that we do is accessible by the public and everything that we do, or. That's an opportunity to be provided to the public. Um, so I don't see that as a, as a big issue. Um, I see timing being inconvenient for folks in the sense that if they can't get it in on time, they don't. Um, but deadlines are there for a reason as well. Um, and you have to be able to make sure that staff can manage the workload moving into a council meeting. There's a significant amount of prep. Especially for our staff and our clerk, um, and any city clerk leading up to a council meeting, um. When I was in city hall every day, the entire day was dedicated to getting ready for city council. So any last minute surprises. Um, to our phone calls or wherever else they come up in the middle or towards the end of the day, towards the council meeting disrupted the ability of. The team to facilitate management as well. So that's just an important, you know. Insider book of what it actually takes to operate these meetings. It's not simple.
Councilor Raisikson?
The, we all agree, I think we did a time monitor, time run, everything, but I think we also need to respect the fact that everyone in our. City doesn't understand a lot of these things and how that food works. And I don't, you know, we all know that it will roll into the next meeting. But I think the general public doesn't understand, let me read this policy that it cut off. In their interpretation, that it's going to be their limited, um, they've been reading these policies. And I go, I can't get my point. So my rec, my recommendation is to try to vote just here. Don't say it's cut off. However, please do submit your input because it will be reviewed in the next five. That's what I mean, the intent, um, from Councilor McAlton and all our thinking here is to. Get people to provide things down, but also let them know we want to hear, even though you won't meet your timeline, you have this advice.
Uh, Councilor McAlton? Yeah, I think that's a great inclusion. I think the scenario that I would, um, might fall through that crack is if the decision is being made that night. And then it's too late, which I understand there's deadlines, but excellent point that. A lot of people who, you know, are providing comments, it might be their first time in government. That, so, um, I, I don't think there's any easy goals, but.
And I, I'll, I'll just say, I think one of the best things we can keep an eye on would be info from our clerk, like over the coming months. When, if you are seeing a trend of like, there's a cluster that comes in around closer to this time, and if that is doable. But I think that is the first priority is, is that doable for staff, getting those collected and submitted the way that you have that, you know. Potentially could get bumped out to a later time, but it seemed to be a lot of them were timestamped really close before the deadline today, so. And it could just be that over time, people get used to knowing and they start to learn. But if we start to see a trend, that would be cool to know if it was doable by staff, because if it wasn't, then it wouldn't really matter what the trend is. It is what it is for our staff level. That's the administrator.
Yeah, I mean, uh, comments that come in at three or four, um, you know, there will be some Tuesday afternoons that are council meetings where we could. Potentially turn those around quickly, but I would say seventy to eighty percent, we would not be able to turn those. Our afternoons on Tuesdays are extremely busy. I mean, um, I won't share which director was in it last, but the city administrator update that we provide. Um, we're writing that until four thirty, five o'clock on Tuesdays, trying to get all the information in that we think you all would want to know and need to know. So. Um, you know, I'm looking at that by fifteen every Tuesday, council meeting, trying to make sure that, so. Um, you know, some Tuesdays we might make it if we got one at four, but seventy, eighty percent would probably wouldn't.
Um, Councilmember McAlton and then Isaacson.
The, the two others, um, and I just brought a comment of, I like the new website, official staff has put into that. Um, the two others that I would suggest is there, there's a how, how do I menu? It might be to add a topic, how do I submit a public comment? The other would be potentially something on homepage on the days, the thing where then we remind folks that there is an upcoming council meeting. To include or, you know, where we have the deadline. So again, I felt it gets up to individuals to be responsible to get things in within the timelines. But I think there are ways as a council and a city, we can make it more transparent in terms of what is set on top and use the tools that are available with the policy.
Councilor Isaacson?
And so, it's a general, uh, is it possible, right? In the scenario where we're trying to make a decision that might have council, that they're kind of given, you gotta have a deadline, do we have to be responsible? And we gotta move on, even though maybe we missed fifteen comments that came in afternoon. But a scenario where we don't have to make a decision at night, if staff, if a plethora of comments that they weren't unable to put in. My assumption, and if we need to put it in writing, I would love to propose this, is that you would tell us. We got like fifty comments that came in afternoon and we didn't have time to get these in here. We're gonna punt this or we're gonna review it today and we're gonna review those comments and bring it back next week. For who, we blame for proving it, but we're not going to do it because we got fifty comments from you. To me, that's what I would expect and respect the citizens to do for each other. Isn't that what you would do unless we gotta make a decision?
Absolutely, it's the council's choice and council makes it.
And we can add that quick, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think today's a perfect example of, you know, we got a bunch of public comments, we sent it all to you, but to ask like, hey, did we get anything after the cutoff? I mean, that was an absolutely reasonable question. And, you know, we might not have it precisely, we're monitoring our email all afternoon, you know, we might miss one or two. But, you know, we probably would have a general understanding and understand if we got fifty dropped at four o'clock versus one.
Yeah, and I think you bring up an excellent point, and I was, my mind was going that way too, is we have to start to formulate a policy around. Uh, the worst case scenario of like something that's gonna generate a lot of comments, not necessarily the one-off times, or it's, we might get two comments or none. Um, I think if we're getting a lot, then those are the situations we need to look at and make it doable or.
And I would just say too, I mean, on a scenario you get forty comments within an hour or two before the council meeting. Um, then that's usually a concerted effort, but before any public meeting, truly here anywhere else. That's usually a concerted effort to disrupt the process, um, that is not necessarily in good faith. And so that is something that the council will, will need to evaluate as well if that does happen. Um, the clerk should be able to get a flavor of what those comments are, um, and then the council can make a judgment on. Whether or not that was, um, whether the intent was to slow down the process, where the intent was to intimidate city council. I've seen that happen. Um, last week a public comment was going to intimidate the public servants that were elected to take vote. Um, and so those things, um, you know, it's, there's lots of good intention. But most often when you're getting something that late, the intention is not for the better of the community as far as was the purpose to disrupt the operations as a.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Okay, so, and, and just to get an understanding, oh, did, you wanna go ahead?
Oh, no, when you're done, I was just going to wrap up to take, to make sure that I understand mine to do.
Yeah, that's kind of, I was just making sure, you go ahead.
Um, so what I took was, um, to add language to the, um, uh. Comments from the audience, to add a sentence that says something to the effect of, if you miss a deadline, please do. Um, provide comment and it'll be considered and provided to council, some language like that. And then on our website, um, adding a how do I submit a public comment? Um, somewhere, I'll have to look on the website or that would go, but it might be able, it might be able to fit under the clerk's office. And then on the night of the council meeting, um, more broadly published the time for, um, public comment.
Yeah, that was only about, I told you if I clarify, it was whenever you post, I know in some time in advance of the council meeting, you usually promote that on the calendar.
Right.
I was gonna say in that area, so wouldn't that necessarily be the night of the meeting, but proactive messaging, but.
Okay.
And then I was just gonna ask, I mean, oh, sorry, did you have another comment? I was just gonna ask if there is a timeline in council minds, I mean, are you comfortable with the things we've given our city administrator? And letting just more time pass and seeing how they.
I'm just curious, you were talking about meeting and I can't remember, Facebook is weird about what it decides to put in front of you at what time, but. Do we send out and read public, um, when the agenda and packet is public? Is that, um, posted to social media? Yeah, sometimes we have, and I don't, I guess I haven't paid that full of attention to know if it happened every.
Um, I don't know if we make, would we make a proactive post on social media? The clerk does not, because the clerk doesn't run Facebook.
Right.
Um, but the website has a functionality with Facebook to gather things. Um, so I'll have to investigate that.
I don't know, just to get people in the mode of understanding, like, you're meeting coming up, just your public comment and two time names of the day. Or it might just raise awareness of the, um, the change. If that was part of it.
I can add that.
Opinion to the Facebook, I don't think social media is, that's not a primary, I think it's the source, but that's my personal opinion. I think you can, you can generally.
Yeah.
Adverse. You do that.
Certainly, um, so one of the things we did with the cultural commission meeting last week, because we knew that there was an issue of. Um, you know, uh, public interest and concern is we did. Those, okay, um, we did a post the Friday before, like we activated our. Jason wrote a post to social media saying, hey, by the way, if you didn't know, cultural commission does be, exists. This is the agenda. So on Friday, he did that to kind of push, um, participation in that meeting. We could, you know, one Friday a month, do something like that for council to, um, to kind of. Push participation.
All right. Anything else on that?
Okay, so with that, we're through our discussion items. There's a council planning calendar you can click on, and I see a development report for January of twenty twenty four from our community development. Um, do we want to get anything else done in this meeting, like perhaps the city administrator's report or mayor's report? Do you all want to longer break between meetings?
I think you should do that. Right, next slide. First up is new development, and we'll move over to Director Knox.
Good evening, Mayor Chantel, staff, and the visiting media audience. Uh, this has been, uh, obviously a busy couple of months, right? So looking through plan, transportation, um, parks. And we're also unveiling the website, which I'm sure that, uh, we're gonna be talking about, but they did just three snapshots. From, uh, things that we've done within our department. So you'll see, and right now, if you go to the website, you'll see this area that's called dual highlights, spotlights. And so we put, and this is on the front page, so you'll see right away two things that are just for the community of all departments. So one of them is the building code change, the other one is the Parks Charles Open Space Plan. Um, and there's two other items on there, so we have four possible at all times. Um, and they'll go fall off, you know, within probably about thirty days or a quarter, whether the meeting, um, has, it could have, or further. Second slide is just a snapshot of our Parks Charles Open Space Plan page. The document over to the right, everybody, I left a code card. This will be at city hall, will also be around for development teams, and this will also go, that we just produced today. Look on our website, but it'll be in city hall, and that is like, hey, the document, new codes. Please check out our QR code or come in, you know, come into our office. So a lot has changed. I'm honestly really thankful for them upgrading the website, giving so much dynamic, while it's been a lot of work. It looks really. While it's been a lot of work, it looks really good. So hopefully they've found how the community checked out. Next slide. Uh, this is, the first slide is our DOD content page. And then over on the left-hand side, you'll see all of the elements. So as we start to build those elements. You'll click on that and you'll see the draft, second draft, final draft. So when you click over to just say the environment sustainability element, you'll pop into there. It'll give you information and that's where you'll find the draft. So it's gonna be more intuitive for the community. Plus also advisory groups too, because that's where they're gonna go see their work as well. The one over to the right is actually a little bit below that second slide. So it gives kind of a schedule and then the little blocks below are like, hey, if you don't know very much about, say, the capital facilities plan. You'll click on that button and it'll go to a page that says, here's what capital facilities planning is. So, uh, we're excited to get this up and going. There, there will be pieces where you don't, you'll put into, we won't see that because we haven't done that work. It's just set up, so we can, we can add them as we go on. Uh, next slide. Uh, we did, uh, we did update the print of all the map. It was, it had been a while. Um, so on the left-hand side, you'll see the map. And that shows all of our current development. It doesn't show our applications, but it does show anything that is in the pipeline. And on the right-hand side is just a spreadsheet that we keep updated that shows how many permits to date that we've issued per project. And then those start to get clicked off and then new projects come in and then units become available. So it's been like a tool, it's really an internal working tool that we've shared for our week. Next slide. Uh, current development, this is just the February snapshot. Uh, we issued six single-family permits in February. Here to date is, uh, nine. Uh, home construction permits, we picked up for about twenty-five. Our new permits under review are hundred and twenty-two. If you remember from last month, we were below fifty. And so all of a sudden, we saw surge, why would we see surge? The building code is gonna be updated. So we're seeing a lot of permits come into the portal and we'll see that probably all break up through the fourteen of the month. But we're expecting that. Uh, total permits in February, so that everything is thirty-seven. Total to date for the year is seventy-four inspections, for the month for two sixty, for the combination of January and February is five hundred and eighteen. It's the highest, uh, record that we, that we've had since, um, Dubon was doing inspections. Next slide. Long-range planning, we have the Parks Open, um, the Parks Plan Open House on Market Twenty-Sixth in this room from six to eight P M. Um, feel free to join the meeting if you would like. Uh, the first con plan, Transportation Steering Committee meeting is tomorrow, so we have that coming up. Uh, the Parks Plan Steering Committee is on three twelve. Um, unfortunately, we also got a council workshop, not workshops. Retreat, thank you. It's been a long day, retreat. And so I will be, um. In the steering committee for a couple of minutes, just doing interdepartmental, we're working to our council meeting. We did complete the two focus group meetings last week. We are holding a second one with our users group. It was very underattended, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to come to the group class so that we can get their information. Uh, the environment and tribe meeting, that group was good, but we did a separate meeting with the tribe because they weren't able to make. The initial meeting either, so we're just trying to be focused and make sure that we get everybody in quick when we go forward. Uh, the final draft P T O I survey, the summary will be completed this week and we will put it onto our website. There is a two-page snapshot summary already there, and this is the one about the two-page report. Um, our survey is almost ready to go to our con plan. That is gonna be emailed out by postcard with a QR code. Similar to the little documents that you see there. Uh, we did get our first, uh, element updated, and that is the environment sustainability element. The only thing that we've done is looked at, okay, what have we accomplished, what is still on there, and what's a new mandate? So that's how we're gonna set up all the elements as we move them through the advisory committee. It's just by doing that basic type of review beforehand before we go to committee. Uh, transportation plan, chapter three, uh, completed its first finished review and we met with our consultants last week. And so that's not a good amount of work that is completed. Um, upcoming item, short-term rental presentation, we're scheduled to come in May, but I think we're actually gonna hit it in April. On the second draft of sign code and permit policy, uh, coding policy and then. So we're just cooking along. Sorry, it was really long, but there was a lot.
How's that?
Yeah, what's the, uh, the purpose of the Parks Plan Steering Committee?
Uh, that's the advisory committee. So anytime we do planning exercises, we, we love to have people come and join us at the table. And what they do is they provide us information, because like, I don't live here, I'm not a Biden, and I go somewhere else. And it's the community that engages with us and provides us the input. So we give them a lot of information upfront, but we're gonna share it that first meeting, like, here's what this, you know, the, the survey said. Here's the things that we heard from our focus groups, which are our user groups or our environmental sustainability group, which is. You know, like maybe D N R and Fish and Wildlife and the tribes. Here's all the things that they said. Then we share it out with the committee and then they help us draft those policies, those golden policies.
So is the committee made up of staff members or the?
No, we are, uh, we are, we are, we are the people that bring all the information to the table. And we went through about an A B period, uh, requesting community memberages and partnerships with even our home office. Um, the D O N A committee. So we have about, you know, ten to fifteen within each of those groups, pretty common. Um, and then we take that work, they're not actually drafting like the document that planning divisions and council is gonna see. They're providing us some steering, some course for actions here and there. And then we take that through planning commission. Planning commission is the one that's gonna actually activate that document. And we're gonna help them do that. And then we take it from planning commission and then it comes to council for consideration. And we'll be doing check-ins with every group along the way, every, every month through the end of the year. We have presentations on both of the committees and they're gonna get the, um. Give presentations to council and report back as well on human meetings.
Well, next slide, I'll turn it over to Director Lanzowski.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, we're meeting. Uh, see what happens before work. So in the packet, um, we're recalling these bullets real quick, but we are working with huge energy. There's a new program, it's called E V pole, it's an E charging program, up and go electric. So their intent is bringing, uh, prospectively charging patients, uh, to the community that they can. So it is all on above ground existing infrastructure, which we don't really have any of them in city, so Ben and our office are working with them on that. Um, they came to us. Uh, because we have no charging station of the city, they looked at, there was twenty. And we are the ones who are the biggest electrical charging island, believe it or not. So, um, that was nice to hear. Now we'll go back. Uh, so we'll limit on, uh, center of the screen here, so big, but it's powerful, not dismucilable with. Communications that have power on it. Um, they prefer one that are transformers and they basically provide a charging station at the base of the pole. Wherever they can. So if you wanna flip back, they're looking to, to serve us with two to four locations. It would take about six to eight months potentially to get these up. It's all at P S C's cost. Um, they do need partnership with us. We're pretty sure that means some kind of agreement that. I would technically believe that the council will authorize the mayor to sign. It's not a cost, but it is a liability in the right way. So they just want to partner with us in that way. Uh, we're waiting to see that. It's a very, a brand-new program that they're working on. So they're learning as much on the go as we are. Uh, so we have another meeting next week. Uh, this does not cross over and affect the other grant programs. So right now, we're still pursuing chargers in the park and ride. Um, what we did learn is we were elected as an. What I mean, but, uh, what we think and what they said might be is. We provide the cabinet, the power service, the transformer and the conduit, they will then bring the actual charging stations. Install them and then at the car park. So it would cut our costs likely close to half. Um, which is still great news. So I think what you're gonna hear from us in the next meeting or two, depending on how fast they bring back some sort of agreement. Is are we interested in the on-hole program? That would be, again, obviously with people in the downtown corridor. Then the case, I would ask people, are we still interested in pursuing the other charging station, car park? Just keep moving forward. Again, we're not rotating, but I thought it was very interesting that P S D has identified us. Question on that slide before we go to that.
You, uh, pass my reminder.
Uh, let's see. So, uh, based on criteria that, that, that P S D said, do you have any guess where those whole-based?
Yeah, they wanna be on main, but we don't have any above ground on main, so half a block off. On most increase, you can find the charger, it goes into a parking stall. So right now. Uh, we're in Stella, go across three pieces of block, and you have a whole, like a whole stair entrance to the drugstore. Right? But close enough, a little blue sign, boom, you're up. So about, about half a block off main, between valley and.
Um, I was just gonna say, this is awesome, Director Lanzowski. Um, when I think about, um, the best way to install this expensive time-bound equipment that will be updated in five to ten years. Um, this is the best, um, one of the best case scenarios, um, is having our power company wanna come in and do this for us. So, um, I will just say that I one hundred percent support, um, looking into this and seeing if this is feasible for the city of Dubon. To accept this type of assistance. I especially like that it's just a little bit off of Main Street, because we do have businesses that are not quite on Main Street. Uh, and I think that it'd definitely be an easier place than the car park for people to get out of their cars and actually for businesses. So when I view, um, public charging stations, um, it is that the local government's not paying for it, another entity's paying for it. Um, or you have the retail businesses, like the grocery stores, um, and the, the low cost it takes to actually charge those vehicles quickly. Um, and it also puts the owners on that private company to upgrade the infrastructure, because that infrastructure changes. Um, and, uh. Since it's not a city expense, it also takes that, um, potential gift of public funds or challenges away from the city. As far as residents who have chosen not to put installing their charging stations in their own homes. Um, and using those charging stations, um, as their base in our community. So I think it's, well, it looks like a. It's very exciting, so I just wanna put my full support, uh, for any, uh, any barriers that are too high in an actual regard to support.
You know, the mental conversations to the pay dues?
Yes, it is. But you go pay with your card.
How's that?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely prefer, I mean, when I originally, and, you know, we talked about even our economic development, um, kind of expecting. Finding a program that would do this without having cost to our direct budget, uh, was the, the goal. And so the fact that you found something that meets that criteria is very exciting.
Have you need credit, they found that. Luckily, they were working on other programs. Actually.
Yeah. So I'm glad we started the conversation, but, I mean, at this point, I think, did you say the cost to extend the electricity? But maybe fifty thousand dollars?
Oh, we were pushing.
To recoup that in some kind of. A lot of lending, um, people to make, I don't know that you'd ever.
I, I am still very interested in pursuing the park park. Chargers as well. Now, maybe there, you know, will come the time when you know, I guess, a more precise problem, right? What kind of grants we might be able to get from your own foot. Uh, but, uh, I would like to keep that moving, uh, moving forward. I think that is a perfect place to have charging stations. And, uh, I, I, you know, I can't speak to, you know, if it's gonna have payoff or not, but, uh. I, I'd really like to see something, uh, something more, so, so anyway, but the volume is, would be terrific, would you do, do all?
I'll jump in and then I wanna make sure everyone else can chime in too. I, this is amazing, I love this. Um, so for sure, totally support it. In terms of the park and ride, um, I am still interested in them there. Um, I wanna make sure and really watch that cost versus. There are so many grants out there and really weigh that, especially given we have an opportunity, you know, the mayor mentioned like. And I think I brought up accessibility before too, that park and ride is pretty steep, you know, especially for people with any accessibility issues. So, um, it's great to keep an eye on it. I don't know what the staff time for that looks like too though, but sometimes, hey, people reach out to us and find us. But, um, for sure, the on-hole program, but if there's a way for us to kind of keep rolling on the park and ride and just look through that. In terms of are there grants that can pay for most of it? Um, if it's a little too expensive, maybe we wait and see what else comes around, because sometimes new things pop up. But, um, are there council members that haven't weighed in yet, wanna get their council members up?
Yeah, no, I think this is great. And the park and ride, awesome.
Councilmember, I'm still in on board with this. Um, that's just freaking amazing, and they found us, they adjusted this forward. Um, and I think you can, like we all said, keep looking in the park and ride, we can have it on the back of our, we can go through. What I mean is there.
How's that?
Yeah, like this, better than partner on a four to five years, and this is our, a lot of things should go, driven by business, capital, you know, it's not. Our government taxared money going in, then here, give you this, if we like electric vehicles, you know. We can afford that too, and we can, we just gotta have the ability to get that money back to our government. That's my opinion, because I think this is doing that, and that's what that, I think we should keep pushing with. When we got one presentation.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, nothing really that hasn't been said by the others. See, I think the only, only item I'd be interested in that will come up. Um, Stephen described it, but, you know, on a per capita basis, obviously. Electrical vehicle growth was all in front of the hockey stick trajectory. It's now significantly slowed down based on a number of factors, but. We still expect that, you know, transition to occur. It'd be great to know sort of what they recommended, like for a city of our size, how many charges. Because I, you know, agree at any given time, they're likely gonna be underused, but it would also be nice to, you know, we. Target peak capacity or whatever we would need to do, and that might be a mixture of, of different things, but obviously anything that we don't have to pay for. Uh, is preferred or something that we do.
Yep, we'll, we'll add.
Thank you.
Okay, so on that is a quick section view of the Culver for Trinity. Um, with the grants, we are peening in the timeline to get the work done. We will likely have to come to council with an advanced pre-purchase for the Culver structure itself. Uh, so you will likely see, and I have the next meeting, it's not the first in April. Um, long story short, we have solicited, the design isn't final. Um, but we have solicited requests to see what the timeline is to get these built and hereby the July fish window. You know, I'm working in Fish Window, where it's, uh, forty days or, or some on forty-nine days.
Yeah.
Yeah, from July to August. So that said, we would also, we can order that, and we can build, and then we deliver, and then we have to install it. So we, if, if everything can line up, we'll be coming in the next meeting or two to look for pre-organization to purchase those. So they're here for the construction of the creek section of road only that we took and, uh, side. I would say sidelined, but separated from the main project. Um, so that's. That's coming out of that.
How's that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna have Steve maybe walk, walk us through the picture.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna have Steve maybe walk walk us through the picture of the the, I see the puddings. I think the where the rocks are, that's actually the. The water would be above there.
Yeah. Yeah, the the line across the very top, right under the word fireworks, that is the, you know, proposed road grade. And we have, and line, and we're, you can see the barriers, and we are raising the road profile here, since it does give. Um, and then you would have the box core, I believe it's about twenty feet wide, ten feet tall, not ten feet tall, the cobble, but. Um, less than that, and then not thirty five feet long from entrance, but it is. It is on a little bit of a skewed on a different alignment than it currently resides in to help improve the. The high goal for a while on the creek. Um, her current, but yeah, that's that's just the box view. Uh. Um, the rapid flashing beacon, uh, those quotes or design publication for publication are out at Sherry and Rain. That's on the page. Um. Benpool go out into this week early next for. Construction quotes, one forty second, three, three to open house will be on three fourteen. Um. We're gonna host it on the project, so one of the neighbors, a long time friend, and behind the big. Front parking area, so we did that, it's prepared, you said, no, we're gonna host it up there. And it's such a small focused project, wanna make sure people are there. Here's the. Question, but we we saw it and uh we'll post it over the top, but then you went out. Door, door knocker, um, neighborhood. People will show up, it's gonna be next week, Thursday. And there will be time. Again, uh, whole uh body name project is, um, it's not, that's already been. So the contractor is working, uh, on that, and they submit all their. Materials, and they're working on purchasing materials and also on everything.
Thank you. Right next slide, uh, Cabal, Kate Fernsey Hall, our finance department, uh, finance department. Uh, hired an accountant, um, from a neighboring city. Thank you, um, to the neighboring city. Oh, did you? Yes. Uh, so they will start on at the end of March, so we're very excited to have an account with Miss Putz Berning, joining our team. Uh, as you saw today, the website launched, so we have new graphics, new structure. We're still identifying ways to augment the website, so our couple pages, they don't have a lot of content yet, so for instance. Uh, special events, has a special events page, but we're gonna do a side page on. How to apply for special event permit, so some of those how do I or how to, that's our next step, so we do have a. The graphics are done, but the content is still another, you know, project for six months, it'll continue to evolve. And then, you know, updates, but we're excited, we think it looks pretty good. Um, so from the meeting that I wasn't at, um, last meeting, there was a request for information on fireworks. So two components of that, I wanted to bring this information back. Um, so the first was a request to cast out a survey. Um, uh, to gather to me input or feedback on. Um, where folks are at with regards to fireworks in the city of Duval. So a mail-in survey is about seventeen hundred to two thousand, to do it by email. Um, we could however use the high-end survey money and. And that license is about a thousand dollars a year and has. Um, pretty good efficiencies and bells and whistles that we could, um, collecting data. Um, so those are two options that we looked at. We're gonna figure out what might be more effective. Uh, we did not cost the price of creating a statistically valid survey from a. Company that does surveys. So if anybody has done kind of mass survey, to create the questions that have a plus or minus statistical relevance is quite expensive. It probably would run us about five thousand dollars to agree. To get a consultant to create the survey as opposed to using some other tools to get a temperature as opposed to. A statistically relevant survey. And then, um, on the right, you see the cost of placing the issue for an advisory vote, our clerk, um. Botero reached up King County Elections, and this is a cost depending on when an advisory vote would go on a ballot. The the low to high on the general is quite the spread. Um. So, uh, I just want to provide that information back. And then there's, um, another update I'd like to provide, which is to introduce Oscar Ray, who is here from Alvin Murphy. Um, we wanna welcome Oscar. He is going to be joining us, since Daniel has moved. On Tuesday nights to representing Redmond, um, so welcome Oscar. I didn't tell you what I'm gonna do, but if you want to offer.
I would be most happy to. I. Excuse me, just recently joined, uh, Alvin Murphy Wallace, but I'm in brackets, giving this for a while. Almost thirty years now, um, before going to Alvin Murphy, I was a consultant at. N R C, and so some of you may know me from that. Prior to that, I uh worked at the city for a number of years, and so super excited to be here. Uh, and super excited to get to know the council a little bit better, and uh, thank you for having me.
Welcome, yeah. And there's one final slide, which I'm very excited about. I wanted to offer an update on some community events that we've been working on. So this summer, we have two summer programs. That one of which is um pretty locked down and the other is on its way to be locked locked down. Um, so the first is Sky Hots is gonna offer camp at Big Rock Ball Field this summer. Um, and on Thursday, uh, Rita, our community events coordinator, is meeting with the Y M C A. To have a uh discussion. On a summer camp at McCormick Park, and they're pretty far into discussion, so we think that that will be a no risk, we're pretty excited. Um, we also thank you to Director Lenachewski and Rita for coordinating with the Seattle Astronomical Society. They are going to run a starbazing series this summer, um, beginning in April and running through December. So once a month, uh, they'll invite folks to bring their own telescopes with them, they'll celebrate them for them for free, it's a free event. Um, so we're pretty excited. Um, that those hours will switch to eight to twelve with the time change in uh in the fall. Um, but yeah, it's a free event. Uh, we're going to do the uh marketing for the Astronomical Society. Um, and yeah, once a month. And then finally, we are working on a Seattle grant, we've, um, we're going to focus really even more internally on our. Development of some uh special events. So we're going to do two, one of which is an expanded lineup Duval to really focus on the Saturday and bring in, um. Something or some other vendor that can um offer takeaway art projects and craft projects or re-making. Uh, came up with fire, uh, uh, it's like fused glass. Um, so really doing more of an artisan craft day. Um, and then the second thing is to do is a Patrick event in summer. Um, so those are the things we're working on right now for community events and, uh, like so. And that's the last slide. If there are any questions, Captain Isaacson and then the mayor.
I just wanna say, Steve, congrats on the starbazing thing, because that will be one summer activity that traffic and road closures will have. We're gonna have some really fun the heck out of summer activities, you know, because with all stupid, I'm sorry, the necessary rubber going on this summer, it's gonna be a fun trip.
Yeah, and just, um, one thing that we are being akin of too, which is actually really exciting for the valley, but. Something concerning, um, that if you don't know, Remlinger has a very significant event lineup this summer. Um, I I like music, I'll a lot of different kinds of music, they're really uh national profile artists this summer. Um, so there is going to be a lot of traffic for some rubber.
Um, I just wanted to, first of all, publicly thank, um, both Jason Grant and Rita Moreno. Um, in particular for the website update and the community events. Uh, both of them have been here less than a year, and that website was on to do less for ten years. Um, and there is no doubt that it would not be done if not for having a full-time person in a communications position. Uh, the same goes for the expansion of our community events. Um, while it may seem simple to have a group come in and say, hey, we just wanna provide service, we provide activities. It is a full load of work, um, to bring those people in, to do contracts, to do the scheduling, the planning and the marketing. And uh, if not for Rita, this would not be happening this year. Um, so I think we all owe them a debt of gratitude, and also thanks again for our congressional delegation for. Um, getting the ARCA funds that have made these positions possible. Um, and I hope that this really comes to mind when we get to the budget process. Uh, because these are positions we've needed full-time for a long time. Um, and I think that in very short periods of mercy, an extreme benefit to our community that outweighs. Um, the cost of those positions, um, financially as well as in the uh community event, we can't share those. Um, and also, it isn't there yet, but I do also wanna know that our emergency management coordinator, Luke, um. Is in the final phases, I know I have too many things to put in this week. Um, is in the final phases of our updating our emergency management confidential plan. About several years out of date when he got here. Again, one of those items that doesn't get done unless you have a full-time person in those. Um, so I'll let, so we can get finished, but that's, um, huge progress for our community, and I wanna make sure that we acknowledge that.
Yeah, that was a huge miss on my part. Not only did Jason, um, or uh, Luke, our emergency manager coordinator get our. Um, uh, emergency plan updated and sent out to the state, but it came back eighty-eight percent. Netline, which is about the price you can get. Um, so it will have some minor edits, uh, that are not sensitive, and will come back to council probably in the next month.
And add one more item onto that too, uh, that in now that this work is getting done, he's focusing on our safety. Um, and safety committees are required by the state of Washington. We have not had one for many years, again, because we did not have a full person in a position to do this work. Uh, so that is an example of required work and training and review that has not been occurring in the city on a regular basis and a decent. Um, so if any accident. We did not have that person embraced, that would be a huge financial and legal liability for the city, so him doing that. Um, is getting us to where we need to be. Um, I just wanna call that out and recognize that it's not easy work. It is not simple work, and he's doing a good job, so, um, he's not here, I don't want to, you know, we're good.
Uh, Captain Shaker?
Uh, listen, John, can you go back to the previous slide? Anyway, I I just wanna say how excited I am about these things and how pleased, uh. The the, you know, staff have worked and maybe maybe come about, we spit into the character of Duval so. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's all about families, uh, it's all about, uh, you know, doing, you know, doing good stuff for the community. And those in those, uh, areas, and I will have my telescope out, because the party.
All right.
Yeah, that was it, that was your line. That was it. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn our video at six fifteen. Thank you.
On the March, Tuesday, March fifth. Most, oh, are you not ready yet?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, thanks, Simon. I live on the Tuesday, March fifth, the local city council meeting to order, and so I'm going to change the M. Um, would you all rise and join me plus?
Okay.
The budget ends Tuesday at five at the United States. It's your very own British status. In this. Thank you.
Mayor O'Grand.
Here.
Mayor from Devon memory.
Here.
Mister Isaacson here, Mister Schaefer here, Mister Markler here, Mister Toffler here, Miss Snappland.
Yeah.
Miss Kufel.
Here.
We have a forum. Are there any additions and fractions to the agenda in the council? Um, I will just note that the city administrator's report um was provided during extra time during the committee hole and so that will not be addressed this evening. Um, and with that, would someone like to make a motion to adopt this special agenda? So seven, all of us in favor, please say hi. I love. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and in fact, we have underproclamations and third, I'd be happy to read this one in the river, you don't have a right, so this is good. Um, whereas throughout history, women have played pivotal roles in shaping societies, cultures and nations, and their contributions have often been overlooked or over undervalued. And whereas, work serves as an opportunity to celebrate and honor the countless achievements, accomplishments and advancements made by women in various fields, including but not limited to politics, science, arts, literature, business, social justice. And whereas, Women's History Month provides a platform to recognize the resilience, courage and determination of the women who have broken barriers, shattered stereotypes and paved the way for future generations to thrive and succeed. And whereas, we acknowledge the importance of highlighting the diverse experiences and perspectives of women from all backgrounds, races, ethnicities, sexual orientations, abilities and socioeconomic statuses, and affirm our commitment to promoting gender equality and equity for all. And whereas, by commemorating Women's History Month, we reaffirm our dedication to fostering a society where every woman in borough is empowered to fulfill her potential, pursue her dreams and contribute her talents to building a better, more inclusive world. Now therefore, I, Amy O'Grander, mayor of the city of Dubal, hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. Let us celebrate women's indomitable spirit and remarkable achievements of past, present and future and rededicate ourselves to the ongoing work of gender equality and justice for all. Thank you. Um, we will move on to comments from the audience, um, which is limited to one hour. I will note before um reading the next portion that um written, those who submitted written comments um are not eligible to speak at the podium, um, and then I will um just read a restatement um in advance. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three minute speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and residential affiliation with the city. It is strongly advised by the cities to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office no later than noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O Box thirteen hundred Dubal, Washington ninety zero one nine, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast, or sent by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council should be directed to the city clerk who will disseminate it following the submit's, submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. It's important to note, however, that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Um, I would like to note that there were several public comments received this evening and those will be published um by the city of Dubal um with our minutes. Um, and uh, those were uh provided, we did uh receive a few public comments after um the deadline today, um, and those will be published uh with the following. Um, so with that, um, we will open public comment, so um we will call off by the names that were in order, and I would ask you to approach podium, um, provide your name and you'll have three minutes to speak to any topic you wish.
Uh, the first person who has refused to speak is Elizabeth Hill.
We can talk on everybody and uh mayor and uh city manager, that audience. I live, I live in an incorporated um King County outside of Dubal and I have been working um as an artist doing volunteer work in the city of Dubal for thirty six years. And I still, and I had other roles as well, um, I'm not going to go into all the things that, as you have lived in a small town for a long time, you end up doing a lot of different things. I'm currently on the board of the Dubal Foundation for Good Artists, which is uh does a lot of things for the community. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Dubal Foundation for the Arts, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. All of us have identities that are complex and I like to think of them as landscapes, like when you look out across the Puget Sound and you see the various mountain ranges and islands. And part of my landscape is I'm part of the queer community. I'm also an engineer, I'm a grandmother, a home woman, you know, I've done a lot of different things and um have that, that landscape. And it was really painful to me when the city took down the pride flag that Aksen had created, both as an artist who volunteered specifically because Dubal was, was a strong arts community thirty six, thirty seven years ago. As a volunteer, as you know, a leader of community in some way and as a person who identified with that flag. I know the backstory of why that flag was taken down. I actually saw the people putting up the other flag when I drove by, I saw them and I just thought to myself, oh, well, it's a free country. Never in my imagination that I think that that what, that the subsequent events would unfold, but they did. And not to revisit that because I think that's all in the past. But rather um to support the cultural commission's recommendation to put up some sort of public art that um would support a diverse community and speak about how I know people feel in their hearts with regard to diversity. So, thank you for listening, um, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. But we can sit in front of her.
And speaking on behalf of Friday World of the Bridge for four five minutes, please. Asten Burton, Redmond local Valley heart. As an individual who was born and raised in this deeply rooted in this valley, my experience growing up in Dubal openly queer has felt harrowing. The stark lack of clear reference and pavement to support even acknowledgement is blatant. Reading me grappling and silence about the vocabulary to articulate my identity. It was meant to find the words to recognize myself, that I would shut out my peers and seek out of my home before graduating high school. Throughout my time in the Riverview School district, I was subjected to a series of inexcusable observations about my first identity. I was told I had great birthing kit, more times than I can count before entering high school. My classmates and teachers gave me the label pungway, the closest word that any of them had to identify me. And I carried that like a ball of nails in my pockets and my sweatpants are fused to take off because they covered the body or was simply separated from. Even Dubal medical providers told me that transitioning was a new fashion tool and it was injecting my body with foreign chemicals that would accede my organs. My body became more of a battleground than we throughout the years, learning is later in life, but it was very different ways than many of my other peers. Bleeding from body parts I felt I shouldn't have and being visibly ignored, at least until my chest started to develop. I recall one time adult did listen to my words and I was simply counseling officer, you know, before to write a apology letter to my parents and get a signature that night or I shouldn't return to school because I wanted to kill myself. My shots of discomfort and euphoria in my body from early ages were ignored, until my senior year when I saved up enough money to take that single bus out of Dubal right after school to a provider who helps educate you. After my high school, I was finally able to learn the terminology that I needed to find staple ground. Words of youth I suffered at the end of my career, the word gay was not just a joke, that word you call people. And I can't tell you how empowering it was for me to wear the word transgender that ring like fucking bells in my ears. I shared that gift with my family, friends, community providers, pastors, it was taken as a joke and for many a insult. I was told I could be fixed, taking your Dubal counselors who told me to shut up and blamed my emotions on a clothing store. You share with you this brief glimpse of the decade and a half that I had to hold my breath, bite my tongue and sit in the eye of Dubal when I felt outcast from. Five minutes cannot cover being kicked out of U through, having one of your police officers delete my report of sexual assault fitment of a minor or the death threats I received regularly from peers in present world. It took years for me to return to the valley, only during the day with at least one other person. I visited my parents for fractions, an hour through the year, picked up a photo from Safeway. I ate in a restaurant till the community members who saw me came out and welcomed me away, so I should have had my entire way. And then I was asked to meet the art. And the artists have a profound attachment to supporting marginalized communities, especially to queer populations, who hold close to the word isolated more than any other word that I heard, especially living as close to Seattle, that's inexcusable. Each of my art pieces reflects my commitment to visibility, connectivity and addresses the longstanding need for the representation we need here at home. The original intention behind the Pride wall was to provide a visible embrace to the individuals of the marginalized throughout the valley and was a homage to my human year and year. Integral to this project was the involvement of the community in its installation. This art piece was not just for the community, but with it. The Pride wall served as a symbol of community empowerment and unity, providing a sense of pride and ownership for those involved in its realization. The symbolism of ribbons evolved over time. As they became weathered and required replacing, they came to reconcile the process of healing and renewal within this community. The act of preparing and refreshing, symbolizing, acknowledging and embracing imperfection, fulfilling strength and vulnerability. The ribbons themselves carry a symbolic significance representing gifts and the acts of unveiling. And the unveiling of this wall was an unexpected enjoyment surprise to many in our community, uniting a sense of belonging and connectivity. Despite their strength, ribbons also remain vulnerable, reflecting their resilience and fragility in their renewed human experience. I take extreme honor in the impact of the art piece. It brings me an unshakable level of heartache with this city. Staff and residents have moved to and applied to work in this city because of an art piece I had a piece in. The art success serves as the testament to the longstanding belief that this community has to be wanted, valued and safe. And a week after its first installation, I would contact an elementary school teacher sharing that her class would wouldn't stop talking about this wall for at least an hour. As a leader, I want to say they may, thank you, Mayor O'Grander, Dubal Council and Culture Commission. Acknowledge that there were some unfortunate circumstances that resulted in the demolition of this art piece, but I am grateful now that Dubal has a proper art policy, culture commission, and has plans to have a sign sharing that Dubal's welcoming to all. The actions witnessed by this community and not only the small handful of individuals in this city charged unspoken in educating the valley with been left with a deep and open wound. The art piece that will be installed is not a rectifying statement to the city, only its approval for it to exhibit. I hope it's not a statement for the leadership to be more than a bandage and a reminder that essential conversations, education and transparent actions are necessary to genuinely address and heal the wounds caused by their actions. The loud, quiet pains tie you, lost souls, as you as their leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep doing better.
Okay, we'll keep it to the believers right in front of us, thank you. Um, Eva Maye.
Eva Maye, I am a parent to two, oh, I live here in Dubal, in South Jersey, um, and I'm a parent to two children who are in LGBTQ community. We moved here from the L B L East South, basically of South Carolina and North Carolina respectively, and when we moved here, it felt a lot like home again as far as a small town that we live in and close proximity to this bigger city. It was perfect fit for us, for my kids. And seeing as we basically fled a hostile environment where my uh peers, my coworkers and friends, even my best friends, were saying things like, oh, well, you shouldn't allow your kids to be trans. The C P X would take them away from you. These were the things I heard all the time. They didn't know my kids were LGBTQ at all, okay? They wouldn't tell them because they knew better. We had to teach them. Don't tell them you're lesbian, tell them you're trans, don't tell them anything. It will put you in danger. Imagine having to tell your child that. When my child comes to me and says, I have a stomach ache, I feel sick, I trust them and I believe them. When a child comes to me and says, Mom, I really think I'm a boy. I trust them and believe them in the same way that I tell them, I believe you that you have a stomach ache. When we saw that installation that Aksen and crew from bottom brought up, it was really amazing to see personally. My kids loved it because they felt seen in a positive and respected way that they were valid and they were human, they weren't othered. If you don't know what that means, go look it up. They weren't criminalized or dehumanized in this community because they made friends who were just like them. Whereas before, they were basically rejected by all their friends. So that's what we left in the southeast with some pretty sad people. And we had nothing but good experiences here in this town and we loved it. And the fact that we have good policy now that covers that, I'm very proud of this council to have stepped up and taken those steps. It was a little rocky. Let's all admit, but let's just say I want to end my statement to the community at large, your religion, sometimes, you know, some of it is Christianity is my religion too. But our religion doesn't dictate what other people do with their lives. So if you don't like seeing a, a flag represented as art and that offend you, you might need to do some digging and soul searching. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Uh, next is uh Jane Webster.
Oh, my name is James Webster. I'm on behalf, right across the bridge as well. Thank you. Thank you. My name is James Robert Webster. I am the vice chair right across the bridge, uh, and I uh, I'm a uh Redmond local. I lived in Dubal for a few years, about ten years back. And I am tired. I said that at my last large statement. I am tired and I wish and I have no love to you. My heart aches. It aches every day. And there are so, so many things to point that ache towards across the world, but here, close to home, so very close to home, my heart aches and it aches for myself, it aches for my partner and it aches for my community and it aches for people I do not know. It aches for those who saw something that reflected themselves and then saw it taken away. Politics by its very nature is power. There are a lot of people that derive the LGBTQI plus community for being political and the reason that, that it is political is because politics is power. It is power over people. And we do not wish to live politicized lives, but we must because the only other option is to not live at all. We did not ask to be politicized, to be the focus of people's ire. We did not ask to be politicized, to be the focus of people's ire and irritation and the rhythm, and we are, and my heart aches for all of us. The art installation was a beautiful piece. There were some people who took some incredible pictures of them, but when I saw it, it made me cry. And it's so hard for me to cry these days. There is so much, so much hurt that is backed up like a clog grenade. And I fear sometimes that if I were to let it out, that it would all fall out and I would fall apart. I feel like a water balloon. Thank you. I truly. The support of the people here, the support of the people walking and listening, the support of almost everyone that we've interacted with has been breathtaking. It has been affirming, life-changing, and I would like to thank council, mayor, for the incredible service that has been done. I didn't need the whole five minutes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Mae, I'm not sure if you would like to speak for a moment? You're welcome, too.
Thank you. I'm the secretary of the press at Bridge, but I have a lot of articles on this side. Looking now, my name is Mae Kitzadas, and I live in Redmond, but I work and visit Duval. I love to come here and spend time when I can, and one of the things I most want is for kids to feel safe here. And something like a rainbow pride wall, it, it makes you feel seen and protected and heard. And kids that are not given an opportunity to express themselves and be supportive, unlie themselves. And I've seen that where I work with, with kids in the community. And I have seen that, you know, through friends and family. And every single time it's attractive, and almost every single time you can trace it back to them being othered, to them not being protected, to them being cool, what they need to think, what they need to feel. Or just, well, just put it aside, put it in a box, put it away, deal with it when you're older. Don't bring it up now. You're just a kid. Just enjoy being a kid. These kids are in pain every single day because they can't be who they are. And they're not hurting anybody, and, and they're not being hurt by being given support or access to medical care or improving community where they can feel free to walk down the street and not be harassed. When you support gay and trans children, the suicide rate for all children goes down because you're creating a safe, loving environment. And everybody who comes out speaking against something like a five wall is not creating a safe or loving community, maybe they should perform for any of the residents, but especially the most vulnerable. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Felice.
Thank you. Amy Olin?
Good evening. My name is Amy Olin. Grateful to live in Duval from 2012. As a parent and community member, I was so happy to see the installation of the Rainbow Fence on Main Street. Every time I saw its bright colors of love, peace, and inclusion, my heart felt full and I had deeper gratitude that my family is part of this beautiful community. When this symbol of acceptance and safety was suddenly removed, I was saddened and grieving anger with it. The flag coming down was a stark reminder of the challenges and negativity our LGBTQI plus friends, neighbors, family members, experiencing. Just for a good thing, as the reference authentic self. As a parent, my heart hurt that my two LGBTQ children and many others like them would receive this clear message that they're not accepted. I worried that my family was a little less safe in our beloved town. Four months ago, I finally moved past my fear of public speaking and planned to attend the city council meeting to speak in support of a rainbow art installation. I felt strongly that a visible and vocal showing of community's support for LGBTQ folks was extremely important. Instead of attending that council meeting on November 7th, my husband Adam and I helped our trans daughter Alice as she took her last breath. Alice was out to our family as trans for nearly two years before she ended her life. As parents, we did our best to learn, to grow, and support this bright, funny, shiny vision we love so much. We're grateful we embraced her and knew her true self. We are devastated that Alice saw the lack of acceptance with the removal of the rainbow fence. She was painfully aware of the negativity she would encounter throughout her life as a trans woman. But the sting was particularly sharp coming from her mouth. It is my hope that we turn this negativity around by approving a permanent rainbow art installation as a visible sign of our community's support and acceptance of our LGBTQ.
Thank you, Amy. Adam, Olin?
Adam, you're from Duval, about 10 years. So when I first started seeing pride flags, it had my implications. It was like a logo for a sports team or an flag, and if you wanted to fly it, fly it, and if you didn't, you didn't. To each their own. And while these symbols are new, and language is maybe new, LGBTQI, we have new acronyms all the time. The people are not, these people have walked with us. They're very good people. We're all here. Yet you talk to members of the community and listen to them tonight, you hear that, that there is horrible harassment, verbal abuse, physical abuse, it's unnecessary. As of March 1st, a few days ago, the A C L was tracking 471 anti-LGBTQ people. There's four here in the state of Wyoming. I had an incredibly intelligent daughter. She was the type of person who could evaluate the situation quickly and act decisively. She played several seasons as a quarterback, requiring quick thinking and ability. She was a respected member of a leadership team for a world-class competitive drum corps. She was quick to drop the hat of stock from her portfolio, and if she was playing poker, she would know if she got a bad hand, and she would lean into the block where she'd be pulled. As she experienced growing up as a trans woman, she saw that even after thousands of years of being free, thousands of years with the LGBTQ community, walking with everyone else, that, that her government, members of her own government, right now, here today, the government is supposed to be protecting her, the government that is supposed to be making a safer future for her, is actively legislating against her. She knew she was dealt a bad hand. And I'm very excited to be able to put it through her own life. Putting up symbols to represent the LGBTQ community, tell those individuals who are suffering verbal, invisible, and legislative abuse every day that they're safe. That we're working to make it okay for them to be here with us as their true authentic self. We, as a people, need to normalize the fact that gender and sexuality are not as binary as we want to thought. The earlier the people, all people, can be okay with who they are, their authentic selves, and the earlier that the rest of us can accept who they are, we will have fewer folks that desire to debate who has been dealt with bad hands. Eighty-one percent of trans women are adults have contemplated to be a trans adult in the United States. Forty percent have identified it. We put up flags. All of us, we major say some words. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Kathy Klein, I'm not sure if you would like to speak? Thank you. Jeremy Rockin?
Jeremy Rockin, I'm from Duval. I want to thank the council. The last meeting I attended, I asked for a policy, a lot of people asked for a policy, and you delivered. We have our policy. We're talking about, we're voting on our installation tonight. Appreciate that. The thing I want to emphasize is community. Community is important. It is not just about people comfortable with, about the people we are uncomfortable with, that we learn to know, that we learn to appreciate. And clearly, there is pain in that process, the pain in that journey. People die. People suffer. And the one thing that a simple art installation will do is show that we reject that path, that history, and we believe in something better. And that is inclusion, that is stretching, that is understanding that just because someone is not like ourselves, they have value and they have worth. I'm the father of a transgender daughter. It's quite a journey to learn to accept that. And I always thought of myself as pretty liberal about such things, but when it happens in your own home, you go on a journey too. And you learn and you grow. If we can find the courage to push back against the naysayers and the divisive people, both people who say, "No, this is just a point, it's just a fad." It is not a fad. The medical community has said that the transgender condition is a medical condition. They don't make those statements lightly. They do that after study, review. They do not just whimsically say that sort of thing. It is true. And yet, because of a certain subset of people who are fearful, some are hateful, that do not understand, and they want to define a trans person's existence to their own convenience. It is not convenient to be trans. But it is true, and we need to support that truth, and we need to say yes to the art installation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Not sure if I can read the first name, but Rizal?
Oh, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew.
Hello, all. My name is Kathy Rizal. I live on Bowdy Street. I've been here, living in Duval for going on 20 years, so I'm almost a local. Thank the council and the mayor and the E P C for moving us forward to the vote today. I am a fifth wife man who uses he have run and a roundabout road. The white flag. And every time I was fired, it brought joy to people. It made me feel happy that we, as a community, were welcoming. And I believe strongly that all of us, every one of us, together is stronger together. And the more inclusion that we have that brings us together makes us a whole colder community. And we have an opportunity, you have an opportunity, I can actually embrace. So I thank you guys for doing that. And I think that that Duval is changing. It has changed the vibe here, and we are becoming more inclusive and more accepting. And you guys have a chance tonight to vote to support that change towards inclusion. And I hope that you vote for hope rather than a vote based out of fear of what could be.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Jen Mayo?
Hi, my name is Jen Mayo. I live in unincorporated King County, just outside of Duval city limits. But I spent a lot of time in the city, and when the rainbow art installation lit up, not only did it bring great joy for what it represented, that Duval, not just one store or a few people, but that to me, it's like we have a welcoming city. And it was just beautiful. Think about how many times we see a rainbow in the sky, and you'll see how many pictures or posts on Facebook. And we had our own beautiful rainbow art installation to tell kids like my beautiful niece Alice and my nephew and my children who want to commit dating a transgender man, that this is a place that they are welcome, that they are safe, and we as a community are willing to stand up to the bullying and to even examine our own behaviors. And as we learn more and more about that maybe what we were taught as kids isn't really that true. I have a long, I have a long learning journey. And learned more and more how I could be more accepting and learn about pronouns and things that I had been taught were very black and white, it would be this way or it's that way. And I was speaking with my friend, son-in-law, one day, and said, you know, I used to think it was on and off. There, you were a boy or a girl. And I said, now I've started to learn that maybe it's a little bit more like right. There's a wide distance between darkness and full light. And I think we as a community have the opportunity to create that safe space where we say, everybody, all the colors of the rainbow, all people are welcome here in the city. And I thank the council, mayor, and all of you who've been working hard to make, allow us to have art that represents and welcomes people, the people who come to visit our community, who might not fit in otherwise unless we say, yes, you're a part of our community and you're welcome here, and we will protect your rights to be here. And I hope that is something that we can all work together to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone you do not have the license to speak to?
Hi, my name is Heather. I have lived in Duval for eight years now. Seems like longer than that. I have two kids and I chose to raise my kids and my family here in Duval. I'm originally from a small town in Kansas. And when I saw Duval, we're moving to this area, the small town charm that was here was so nostalgic to be raised in such a small one in the west. Being raised in Kansas, I was both directly and indirectly taught to not be tolerant of any other lifestyles of any form. I moved out of that small town, Kansas, and I met many people that had different lifestyles, and my eyes are opened that other lifestyles aren't only okay, but they're beautiful. And what did I learn from this personal growth? I learned love, love and acceptance for all. My house is one of many in my neighborhood currently that is now lined with rainbow flags. They were initially put up to honor Alice. They remain up in her memory, although I wish this display would have been done sooner in hopes that it would have made a difference for Alice. These flags provide hope, love, and acceptance to anyone that drives through our neighborhood. And it has most definitely made an impact and has started so many conversations. And it has most definitely made an impact and has started so many conversations within our town. And this is one small neighborhood in the town. And we don't have that much traffic either. So imagine the impact that would be had in the town if Acton Art and Stole TV reinstated. All people should be welcome in this community.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you all. Thank you, Helen Connor. Thank you all.
We'll go ahead and move on to approval of the consent agenda and the motion of proof of savings consent. So all those in favor can say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to scheduling, uh, for some mayors report, um, not too much this evening. Uh, we have the local mayor's meeting today. Uh, just good update on what's going on in our communities. Uh, there was discussion about evangelism in front of both the cities of Kirkland and Redmond. Um, and those communities continue to do everything they can to re-repair and replace that art. Um, committed to supporting LGBTQ community through any avenue they can. Uh, so, uh, I know that most people in this room are aware of what's happened. Um, so I did want to share that, uh, that is something that the mayor shared this afternoon at the meeting. Um, tomorrow, we have the Sound Cities Association Network Nitter. Um, several people, including County Councilman Mark Fabio Valducci, will be on a panel tomorrow evening. I know Mayor Pretten and I are attending and not sure who else is going. There's still this opportunity to register. Would like to see as many people as possible there. Um, I will be heading out to, um, the National League of Cities Conference, uh, this Sunday afternoon to hear from elected officials and members of the federal government as well as um, visit the various senators and other municipal delegation with other members of the Washington State Municipal Delegation. Um, on a point of personal privilege, I would like to honor our mayor Pretten this evening. Wasn't aren't aware, the Association of Washington Cities has a base-based certification program. Of the Association, Washington City Certificate of Municipal Leadership. Um, part of this process is attending conferences, attending trainees online. Um, for some folks, it involves, uh, being a part of leadership. And it takes a lot of time and commitment, um, to earn the certificate of municipal leadership. Uh, some people, it takes their entire careers. Uh, some people are super don't-getters. They get it done in the first term. Some people somewhere in the middle. Um, and our mayor Pretten, Amy McHenry, um, has officially earned that honor uh, to be, uh, have her certificate of municipal leadership. Um, and especially with our topics tonight, I did also want to mention that one of the items that has come in is a requirement to proceed here to begin municipal leadership is attending and learning on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which includes for our LGBT community. Uh, which is a huge step, especially for state-led organizations. And we want to share that um, with those, um, in the audience as well, because while there is hateful legislation that people introduce and unfortunately lose board and other areas. There is broad support from cities across the state of Washington for making sure that diversity, equity, and inclusion is a core function of our work and our policies, um, as lawmakers throughout Washington State. And with that, I want to provide this to our mayor Pretten. Uh, she, I'm sure that she's only a fraction of the way when you mean earning her advanced municipal. But she is less, I think we have maybe, I think she's maybe only one of three total in our city's history to earn this honor. Um, so I believe our previous mayor, uh, I earned it advanced. And so, uh, at, at the most, at the least, she's number five. Um, so when you think of how many elected officials we have had in our city. Ask me to join me in honoring mayor. All right. Uh, and then we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, council committees and have reports, uh, with individual council member reports. If anyone would like to speak this evening. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda items of business. We have two public hearings this evening. Um, the first is on the National Fusion Discharge Elimination System Annual Post-Ordinance on the Local Food Units. I will, um, read the rules of our public hearing once this evening, and then we will open the public hearing. Um, and move on from it. So in adherence to the regulations outline for public hearings before Duval City Council, Chapter Nine of the City Council Procedures Manual, any individual seeking to address the council during the designated public comment segment must comply with following procedures. First, sign in on the provided form specific to the public hearing. And second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of the said form. Upon commencement of the hearing, as announced by the chair, typically the mayor, the clerk will present the chair or the side issue. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the signing form, where they must communicate their name and, if relevant, their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented, and their corresponding role or position within said organization or group. Time limits for speaking gainers are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those representing a group of organization, unless otherwise determined by a majority vote of the council president. The clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker. Comments should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully address the city council with personal remarks being deemed inappropriate. Disorderly conduct, including disruptive behaviors such as booing or harassment, will not be tolerated and may be result in removal from the process. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately, but may be addressed at the chair's discretion following the comment period's close. Copies of city council and public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees at the outset of each public hearing session conducted by the Duval City Council. And with that, I would like to open the first public hearing on the National Fusion Discharge Elimination System Annual Report, uh, with Director Steve Lenachewski and our engineer Larissa, um, wait, is there any, uh, Grandell? I can't see it on here. Thank you, Larissa.
Yeah, good evening, mayor. Yeah, and residents, this is the most I think I've ever given a public hearing before. Um, so, my name is Laura Grandell, Public Works. Um, every year, we, in order to comply with our MDDEAS permit, we have to do an annual report that talks about everything that we've done and will continue to do to meet those obligations. Some of the sections that I'll go over just by, by fly, um, it'll be really quick. Um, is, uh, stormwater planning, public education and outreach, which is this segment of that. Um, we have, uh, this annual report, if anybody wants to look at it, um, provide comments um, on the website, on our stormwater website, and I think that's it. We used to have a paper copy, but, um, it's now on the website. Um, public involvement and participation, uh, MS four, mapping and documentation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, controlling runoff from construction, operations and maintenance, source control program for existing development, and we're required to contribute in some way or have a program for monitoring, monitoring and assessment. Section is stormwater thing. Um, there is a permit requirement that we have an interdisciplinary team. That's our Development Review Committee. Um, we are to coordinate with long-range plan updates. Um, we're having a lot of them right now, our comprehensive plan, transportation plan, um, stormwater plan is not slated to be updated, but it was, it was just adopted in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. Um, we are also to look at code requirements that do not, um, that have that reduce barriers or remove barriers for low-impact development, um, best management practices, and stormwater management, act and planning map. Um, we don't have any high priority catchment areas within the city. We're, we're two and a half square miles. And the high, the high priority catchment areas or water sheds are usually, um, the, uh, business like business district that have really busy parking lots, so many trips and stuff like that. But we don't have anything, um, within our jurisdiction that prider goes, so we don't necessarily, during this permit cycle, have to do that. Um, that they can actually thing. Public education outreach. Um, so we try to target stormwater outreach, uh, through the school-based. We have school-based programs, nature vision goes into the elementary schools. Um, not the high school anymore and not the middle school yet. But we have these get into the elementary schools with nature vision. Um, have we cleaned up informative signage and city website updates. Um, and then we create, we try to create or at least, um, promote stewardship opportunities in, within the valley. We do Earth Day and Harbor Day, um, down at the PD parking lot and Zippo every year. And it's the turnout system getting better and better. We have food for stormwater. We have food for, um, water. Everybody, P S E, come. Great fun. Public involvement and participation. Um, again, this public hearing is part of that. We have website. Um, we, on social media, we do post for adoption hearing and our behavior change campaign. Um, we've tried and been trying to put that. You can call it a public work or you can mail comments to our P O box, uh, one three zero zero. Uh, mapping and documentation. Uh, we create, we, we created a G I S, uh, Geo Database um, to have all of our catch bases piped, bulk on, um, everything that has to do with stormwater within the city. Our discharge locations, we're required to, um, monitor and uh, type and size them to ecology, anything over twelve inches. Um, and we've been doing that since I've been here, so at least fifteen years prior to being here. And then we update it as we get new, uh, facilities. Illicit discharge detection and elimination. Uh, we've had a program that, uh, how we satisfy this is we check all of our discharge locations. So if we see something at a discharge location, um, that is, it smells, it signs or whatever, we can go back from there and try to chase, uh, find it to where it comes up, go back and find where it comes from. Um, we've had that program forever, so we've always complied with this part of our, our permit. Controlling runoff from construction. So this is a challenging one, but we just recently, in order to comply with our permit regulations, um, we updated new enforcement code that we didn't really have. That was specific to stormwater, so that's how we're meeting that. Um, and we do staff training, site inspections, we review plans, um, and those types of things. Operations and maintenance. So we have maintenance standards. Um, as a part of code, we also have a kind of like an S O T and a, and a maintenance manual for the public work group. Um, and then we also go and inspect privately-owned facilities and provide a discount if the facilities are in good condition or to the storm rate, um, for that business. Or we give them, uh, a handful of things that need to be corrected. Um, we do employee training regularly, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan, so our SWIP. This is another plan that we're required to have for our, um, just actually the the crew's maintenance yard right now, and then record improvement. Source control for existing development. Um, this is kind of a new one for the permit. The smaller jurisdictions, Seattle, um, have been doing it for longer. Um, but we're now going to be looking, we have to inventory all of our businesses. And now we have to, next permit, which is going to be due in July of this year, we have to go and make sure that everybody has, if there's a hiding site, there's a treatment, a water quality treatment, at least for, um, for those facilities. Um, so this is an ongoing one that will have more compliance movements next permit cycle. Next slide. And we pay into the Stormwater Act and Monitoring Consortium. Um, it's a regional monitoring program, uh, that they have, there's a bunch of good studies that come out of this program. So we get a lot of good resources from it. It's, it's regional, it's not local. Um, but there are things that we can apply from these regional plans, um, and research locally. Next slide.
Thank you. All right. Um, is there anyone, uh, from the public signed up to provide public comments? Uh, not on the sign-up sheet. If anyone would like to provide public comment to this, um, report, uh, please feel free to approach podium, then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you, Larissa. Last call. That scene, public hearing is now closed. And I will open public hearing on the Post-Ordinance on Mobile Food Units. Uh, Director Lawrence Thomas and our Director of Community Development and Troy Davis. Our senior planner will be providing the presentation. And after the presentation, we will take that.
Great, thank you. Can the city clerk please enable screen sharing for me, please? Thank you. All right. So, uh, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Troy Davis. I'm the senior planner here with the city of Duval. Tonight, uh, tonight's public hearing is on the mobile food unit ordinance. And I hope my slide shows up. Can everybody see it? Is that a yes? Sorry, I can't hear.
You can see it.
Okay, perfect.
Um, but it does look like it's in the mode for, um, you know, instead of presentation mode, it's a worse.
Okay, hold on. Let me, let me just share it. Like, does this work better?
Uh, yes, now it'd be a quick shot, slideshow, it'll be great.
Oh, cool. Uh, thank you. Uh, so tonight's public hearing is on the mobile food unit ordinance. And this ordinance consists of eleven exhibits that I'd like to enter into the record. The mobile food unit ordinance consists of quite a few topics. These topics all address various components of operating, or the operation, I should say, of mobile food units within the city. Uh, we start out with things, uh, as simple as the applicability, as to what these regulations apply to, uh, all the way up to how you can operate, uh, what you can have for sale, uh, parking and circulation, and how many food trucks, I don't know, mobile food units, I should say, you can have, uh, per property. So, real quick, what is a mobile food unit? Uh, it's defined in the Washington Administrative Code as a readily movable food establishment. And a food establishment is an operation that stores, prepares, packages, serves, and vends food directly to the consumer. So the mobile food unit is a more inclusive term uh, because we do have, um, mobile food units that aren't necessarily food trucks. Uh, but those can include, uh, push carts, uh, and trailers and other mechanisms by where, uh, food can be um, stored, prepared, packed, and served, uh, on wheels, essentially. So uh, that's why we use the term mobile food unit as opposed to, uh, food, uh, food truck. So why mobile food units? So the business community has expressed interest in the past to have the option, uh, to operate here within the city. And without a mobile food unit ordinance, uh, mobile food units can only operate under special event permits such as Duval Days or Summer Stage and those sort of events. And third, this helps, uh, support our comprehensive plan, economic policies and goals, uh, for business growth and diversity. So work on the mobile food unit ordinance actually began way back in twenty sixteen. It's kind of hard to believe I'm eight years older than I was when I, I started working on this ordinance. Um, we had internal revisions and discussions with the Planning Commission and City Council uh, between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-three. And then finally, in April of twenty twenty-three, we adopted a six-month interim ordinance uh, that expired in October. Uh, that expired in October. And then following that expiration, we adopted another six-month interim ordinance. Um, later in October that is currently in place. Um, this mobile food unit ordinance will replace the interim one and be codified within our municipal code. So uh, as a recap, we've had two mobile food unit permits issued within the past twelve months here in the city of Duval. And both of those are for locations at Duval Market. Uh, so you may have seen a food truck there in the past and the current one that is is operating. I'm not sure if they're operating every day. But I have seen them out uh operating in the past week, so. Where can mobile food units set up shop? So we've outlined in the ordinance uh a handful of zones within the city. To which these units can operate. There are commercial zones, our mixed-use institutional zone, our light industrial zone. Mixed-use twelve zone and old town, midtown, and uptown. So essentially, all our properties that are zoned commercial in some capacity. Are capable of uh utilizing the mobile food unit ordinance. This map is just a a real simple map that we've prepared that just kind of outlines where mobile food units could possibly take place. This isn't an in-depth analysis based on the requirements other than zoning. Uh, but you can see mobile food units can pretty much operate down the Main Street corridor of the city of Duval. So how do people that are interested in operating M F U get started in the city? Uh, first you apply for a land use permit, which is good for a period of twelve months. And at the same time, you can apply for a business license, uh, which is good for a period of twelve months. Uh, those uh approvals can be renewed and extended at the end of the twelve month period. Uh, indefinitely so long as the operator is operating within the confines of the ordinance. So when can they operate? So we've set some hours in our ordinance between the hours of seven A M and ten P M. We wanted to make sure that mobile food units operated within typical business hours. Um, tip so that we didn't end up with a situation where we had a noisy. Um, operate a potential, a potential, I should say, noisy operation. Um, considering a lot of our commercial zones are uh fairly adjacent to residential areas. So where are we in the process? We're currently uh in in the process of holding our public hearings. We held a public hearing before the planning commission at the end of February. And they made a recommendation following that public hearing. And then tonight, uh, as we speak, we're having the public hearing before the city council. The next step would be for final action to be taken by the city council. And just for highlight, uh, the planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed mobile food unit ordinance. At their regularly scheduled meeting on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And I should mention, uh, the only minor changes to the ordinance versus the interim ordinance. Was taking out the language regarding interim. So other than that, all the language in the ordinance remains the same. And uh, we have a more permanent um sounding language by removing all the the interim language. So uh, that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Um, and now we will be happy to receive public comment. Um, so um, same goes as the last hearing. If you would like to provide all the comments, please approach podium.
Elizabeth Hill, and on this one, I am representing the Duval Foundation for the Arts. Well, Duval Foundation for the Arts owns the property that is down um in Duval Village. It took us twenty-five years to get that property. Through a really long process of multiple contracts with the city and the developer. And a whole bunch of fundraising. I'm not a payback, you know, entire history, but four cultures heavily involved. One of our contracts is, well, the purpose of that property is to have events. So one of the contracts that we have with the city is our parking agreement. And when we negotiated that parking agreement, it's one of the most important. Well, you may not know, everybody may not know that. So the city owns the parking lot. We own the property. This is a, we are the foundation. At one time, it was the city of Duval. The art commission and the foundation, we're all gonna work together to make a performing arts center. That was our goal. And um. When we got to the part of the parking, we ended up with the city owning the parking. It's it's also. Uh, we, we on our private property, we have a public easement along the sidewalk. That we paid for with our money, made it nine feet wide, wider than the city requires. And the public walks down through there all the time. It connects that part of the city, the town, through the trail. So you could go from that parking lot that we own, through the trail, through our property. Cross that little metal bridge, up the trail, back to town, down the main sidewalk. It's a good circulation thing. We, the art artists, we take care of the stormwater that is generated off the city's parking lot. We paid for the rain garden. It's on our property. We maintain the rain garden that treats the stormwater. We can use all of those stalls except for eight all the time. Technically, the city has to ask that permission to use the other stall, but we don't. You know, we're happy that people are using it. We, on the other hand. Um, get to use all the rest of the stall whenever we want, all the time, without having to get any permits. And when we negotiated that with our lawyers and the city's lawyers, a lot of what we were thinking about is. We made sure it didn't stay just for parking. Cause we knew we might wanna have. Cables, booths, food trucks. We got a grant from Four Culture, sixty thousand dollars. Put in power. They're not our main power, but a transformer to drop the power down. So we have outlets for the food trucks. We believe that we have a vested right through that contract. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. But we wanna be able, the whole reason we developed this property within the city of Duval, rather than going out to King County. Is we didn't wanna get temporary permits. So that's why we worked with the city over all those years, because we didn't wanna be stuck. Not knowing when we could have an event, when we couldn't have to have an event. And this was something we negotiated. And um, Councilmember Navlin knows this so well. I mean, we really beat each other up over a long period of time. And we finally got it done. And we just don't wanna have to get the permit for the food truck. Like we just have one, we can make a phone call and get a food truck there like we did last week. And uh, Councilmember Navlin and I had a good talk. We talked with a lot of other people. And I talked both with um Laura Thomas and also um. With the city administrator, not just myself, but the former president of D F A, Tony Cholera. About why we feel this way and what we're working for. And we we asked for an exemption from this. And we were in the impression that that was being looked at by the city. But I guess I'm really happy I'm happy to be here tonight. That I can formally request that on behalf of D F A for those reasons. But it might seem simple to get a permit. But it's not simple to get a permit, you know, it's just another barrier to us, you know, to use our property, what we. For what we bought it for and zone for that. So would you like, I don't mean zone for that. I mean, it's an event center. It's all, I have. Contracts from the fourth in my race, talking about that being an event center. So it would be like asking a safe way to get a permit every time they sold that for. So thank you very much.
So anyone else like to provide a public comment on this this evening? And when we move on to new business, the first item is agenda bill twenty-four dash seventeen. Public art project recommendation from the cultural commission for discussion and or decision presented by our city administrators and Cynthia McNair. Uh, good evening, council, mayor, um, members of the public. Thank you. Uh, Cynthia McNair, city administrator. Uh, so council, what you have before you is agenda bill uh twenty-four seventeen. Which is the recommendation from the uh Duval Cultural Commission to city council. For the project design um that's included in your packet to install a pride-ridden. Uh, public art project on city hall. Um, for reference. Director Lenashewski in the public works department has scoped out the side of city hall for this project. Uh, we've looked into appropriate building materials, size, scope, and believe it's an appropriate spot for the city's expressing of speech. There at city hall. Uh, we have since the time that um. We took down the ribbons. Um, those ribbons have remained in my office. They're the same ribbons that were originally at Montefiore. Uh, they're able to be reused for this project and have been donated for the product. Uh, the cultural commission has put together a, an art project that offers an artist budget of a thousand dollars. And total project budget of three five hundred for the building supplies and framing for the city. Um, fall project. Uh, we don't believe we actually will need all of that, but we finished up. I to give some opportunity for additional design to the artist should they need additional material or installation. Some of that includes the crew time for installing the private project on city hall. Um, the project design adheres to the public art policy that was approved by councils several months ago. And so you see here in the packet that the recommendation includes a project objectives. Specifically referring to section one point one of the public art policy. Uh, there is uh provision that anticipates receiving community input, including. Which is in compliance with section one point five of the public art policy. Uh, the recommendation for the project scope. Uh, this is anticipated to be a limited educational, which is a public art project. Policy it allows for. Uh, there's a budget and anticipated timeline. Uh, I am requesting and putting together this agenda bill. A uh decision tonight because it is on a like a new timeline. The goal would be to have this um. Initiated and completed by the end of May in time for Friday. Uh, open to any questions. Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Morrison?
Okay, the mayor didn't delve in. This is our first one comment, one question. Um, you know, this particular project. Personal to me for for a number of reasons. One engaging with the community. Um, I'm a parent of a transgender. Uh, daughter. Um, you know, I'm an ally. I'm a member of the L G B T Q I A I plus community myself. Um, I know we've gotten a lot of. Uh, this is probably the 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 most difficult conversations we've had in terms of the public forum and and opened up a lot of wounds in the community. But, you know, in terms of, and I'll not be transparent and say this was not the first project I expected to come to the political commission, not that that. You know, it it doesn't extend specifically from the timing perspective. Uh, but uh, you know, it obviously sort of will bring up some feelings again. And we saw some of that reflected in the in the feedback we received. I think the reality is, you know, there's a, there's there's two sides, there are multiple sides to all the issues. I think there is. Fourth in the community, um, of which visibility is not a word. And regardless of what we put forward, if it invokes L G B T Q. A I themes, it would not receive support. Uh, but at the same time, uh, you know, I looked at the history of art and art is not necessarily made to make people feel comfortable. It is in fact, uh, encouraged to create dialogue. Um, as we call that in the comments tonight, at the particularly difficult period of time is. Trans uh individuals in particular have been targeted at the political talking points. Uh, and I think it's part of the city's, you know, role that they do play in terms of um responding to contemporary events. The other piece I'll just say is, you know, I very much view this as a public health issue. We've had a number of suicides in the community. Beyond your, your daughter, which I, you know, sympathize, I I can't imagine as a parent going through such an experience. But the community does do an outreach. In the past, we saw the times about them treating various things. Uh, and when I think about sort of the the um epidemic of of gun violence in this country, if there was a simple solution that we could do. That would address gun violence, of course, we would do it, but it's not. This is one, basically, we're we're using symbolism and art. To encourage inclusion and a feeling of belonging. And if that even prevents one person from taking their life or feeling more welcome to me, that is a small price to pay. Regardless of any pushback within the the community. I also think from a community perspective, it creates an environment. Albeit not an easy one to have those conversations. And I think the more of the community can talk within itself. Uh, that's true of the whole country. I wish at a country level, we were having national conversations, but you know, this is something we can do. As a city and a county, when a community is to uh. Bring people together, bring people apart a little bit, like, you know, create a a safe space for for our youth. So um, I'm I'm in favor. I I uh, I think there are other projects on the on the board. But but, you know, again, like, you know, art and nature, I I'm in support of all those things. Um, but I I do think this is a a timeline issue and 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 response. You know, we, the city can do small gestures in terms of the proclamation being signed, but again, this is a. An opportunity to do the powerful statement and uh, and bring uh. Feel a sense of community, not just within Duval, but but across. Uh, the surrounding values, energies. Again, not everyone is maybe comfortable or welcoming to that, but again, it's. It's uh, sometimes it's, you have to to sort of promote the harder, harder conversations as well. I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I would, as I mentioned that, and I am forever grateful that I did it. Because it showed me that this community definitely needed it. Um, it's it's still spurred lots of good conversations in my store and in the community. Um. And it's very vitally important that that representation is here. And so I'm really glad the city is gonna have this in store.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember.
Yeah, I like to say I'm in favor of this agenda bill. Um, my concern is in lieu of our light of the. Um, if you have the, it's related to the revenue and the curve fund and the vandalism that's taking place. Is there any um. Any protections planned for this?
Uh, so, uh, yes, we are looking at design for potential security measures. Uh, we don't have a firm recommendation yet. Um, we do have a complication in that city hall sits on a state. And so any cameras that we put to protect or to view that would need to be mindful of. Not catching for the state code. Anything for particular, any particular purpose. And likewise, we want cameras installed that would not be used for the monitoring or capturing the city employee. Business even not to develop. So it's sensitive. We are looking though at placement and options. Um, and it could be protecting artwork itself, the plexiglass, um, that could also be inclusive of the art. Shares, the picturing, the opportunity of the art. So lots of options that could both. Uh, be informative and informational as well as the opportunity for the art. Um, I do wanna, um, if with, if you would indulge me, I do want to offer that. This is actually not the first project of the cultural commission. Um, I will be asking for the cultural commission to come do a city council report. In April, um, but they have been hard at work. We have a call for artists up right now, um, through the plant car them. They also approve city park signs and they design themselves for it. So. Opportunity to honor the cultural commission who not only was formed. Um, but quickly got to work and have done amazing work in the short time they've um been working together, so.
Uh, Councilmember Morrison.
Not really quite either, just kind of a little bit of dialogue, but good.
Not really quite either, just kind of a little bit of dialogue, but good. Empathy and deeper intent, I mean. I grew up in one of those deep thunder things that in my ways, my words shows them fully, right? Because, just because you're from a region doesn't mean you're that person. So I add that what we all offer in our experiences, don't, you know, root everyone stereotypical. Your community is asking the religious community to not, to fear that you, I ask you not to fear that religion or locations, right? That we're all trying to work through here, very hard, very tough. You know, we get challenged, the position of vote is looking at places we're running, the government, the government should run, that freedom of speech, is this art? What is art? Sculptures, flags, pictures, all these things. What I want you to know about voting is one hundred percent, right? No doubt, hands down. We as a city, state, and nation, our nation battling the freedoms that we have, freedom of speech, empathy included, and that's what you should be in your City Council, controversy that we. But I ask that we all are politically and you can hear the river noise, very sad for me too. Because I was raised away that assault that's in, the way you live. Go read a book called Creators of the Earth. It's an interesting book on historical fiction, on kind of the intertwines of power politics, the church, whatever church, religion. And it will open your eyes on corruption everywhere. And I'll read through that, you know. Voting for this today, I think, doesn't vote to say that your religion is wrong or bad, right? So for those of us who are City Council, when you walk out and you get opposed to that, that's how, I have one hundred percent support voting for this if I was approached by someone extreme religion on a religion side. Again, within the eye and say, I'm not voting against your religion. Go practice your religion. And I'll ask you to go rein in your extremism in your religion to extent. Like you're here at that. I ask you as well to rein in some of your extreme people that spoke in some of these meetings that hear their emotion, that let their emotion get away and say some hateful things that I don't see come from LGBTQ, you know. To rein it in, and I think we continue moving forward on what we're accomplishing with this. That is, you don't hate us in a religious perspective, the religion ain't me. I want all these groups together and really do what I think your community does the best. It's inclusive love, don't use a group as an agenda. Thank you, and I'm very proud. In order to proud, you know, and how you use pride as well in the city of Charge and Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember?
First of all, I'd like to thank those who spoke, keeping your words, your experience, that were very moving to me. So, thank you all for having the courage to do that. Do all, absolutely must be a safe, inclusive, welcome community to all. I think, I think we're all generally in agreement with that. Public art, you know, has the ability to educate, has the ability to move people, has the ability to create, you know, positive discussion. It also has the possibility of alienating people, of dividing people, of polarizing people. I think we need to ask ourselves here tonight, as council, we need to ask our fellows, what are we really looking to do here? And I don't have a good answer. However, we need to give that some thought. If there's an urgency, but we need to vote on this tonight, you know, will so be, and I think some of our minds are already made up. But I for one cannot support this because I will believe, I believe it will do the community more harm than it will do good, and it will do good. I don't doubt, and I don't doubt that. But at the same time, I'm very concerned it will create further division within our community, hard feelings on, you know, on different sides of the issue. So, like I say, I really cannot support this myself.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone that came tonight. I also watched the public opinion and heard the testimony from there. Wanted to thank everyone who wrote their letters. It was a lot to consider and Councilmember said, there there could be a lot of good that would come and comfort and feeling of acceptance that an employee would provide. But my primary role as a councilmember, I'm going to read a little, it's really short, but I just tried to gather my thoughts. But my primary role as a councilmember is that of a policymaker. And with that comes responsibility of setting precedent that can inform policies and decisions in the future. I feel that art should open rather than close down the senses of the observer. And I'm concerned portraying existing flags or symbols in artwork won't spark openness or creativity. Observers of a flag or symbol will almost certainly have already formed an opinion. And thoughtfulness or reflection will not be initiated. There is so much beauty in the diversity of this community. And I believe our city art collection should focus on creatively capturing that diversity and celebrating our shared humanity without using flags or symbols. For those reasons, I am not in support of this project.
Thank you. Let me have a turn, McHenry.
All right. I think we all have enough to speak on, right? So, there was a lot of comments today, both an email and then people that spoke tonight. And I just want to thank everyone, because I know it takes a lot of courage to get up and speak or to pick your thoughts together and email an elected body and give your opinion. So, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to do that. I went through, I also watched the Cultural Commission meeting, it was a great meeting. Answered one question I had about the temporary nature, which was really helpful, just about how that was intended and all, you know, because I think we talked about that before, about something more permanent, but I love hearing the reasoning behind that. I also went through the section one point one listed or referenced in this agenda bill. And I think it just checks all the boxes, especially the encouraging public dialogue, I think. We've triple checked that box. I think we can all agree that LGBTQ people should be welcome in our community. I think displaying pride art on government property promotes inclusivity, diversity, and also acknowledges LGBTQ community's contributions to our community. We also, we specifically seek out other special groups, like lately we've been talking about the tribe and wanting to see more of their art in our community. So we look for places where we're lacking representation in our art and we go seek out those special marginalized groups to fill in those gaps where we see. So I just wanted to bring that up and, because I think that's important to look out for others that maybe aren't represented yet. When we do this, it fosters the sense of belonging among residents without promoting a specific political stand. Some of the comments that came in, I wanted to show that I considered what they said and took it seriously, and so I thought about my thoughts on that, about understanding that some people do view the LGBTQ flag as a political symbol, but I don't believe it's inherently political because that depends on the context and the intent of it. And the context and intent is part of our proposal. I have only heard is one of inclusivity and acceptance of all people, including LGBTQ. Now, I spoke to a real expert today who's a teenager and asked for their thoughts because neutrality came up. And I asked what they thought it meant to be neutral in government. And I mentioned how maybe some people think that we shouldn't have something that's focused on one group that's not remaining neutral. And this teenager told me, that's interesting, I hadn't thought about it like that before. I'd only thought about how people in our government should not bring their religion, should not bring their personal beliefs to make the citizens and govern everybody. I hadn't thought about it, that government shouldn't represent or look out for specialized marginalized communities. And that kind of blew my mind, because I'd already been starting to think about some of that and how every month we have proclamations that aren't for everybody, they're for specific things. So that's the one today, Women's History Month. So, very similar to the proclamations that we have each month, they are different. They target specific issues, specific people, so there's already a precedent for that. And I also can't think of a single art piece I've ever seen. I don't think I could find one even, that everyone would feel represented by. So I know there were some calls of like, it should make everyone feel whatever. And I just, I don't think that's also the purpose of art. So, the bottom line is a couple of things. One is I can't do something everyone's going to agree with. But I'm working for what I believe to be the best interest of the community. And I want our message to the LGBTQ community to be that their government sees them and they are welcomed and supported here. Thank you.
Would anybody like to speak again, or would Council like to make a motion?
You can make them, I would think, pretty quick. Yeah, I wrote a couple about Santa Fe, and it's, then I think, I'm kind of glad I missed because one thing I wrote down that I also want to say was as the community sits here and witnesses vote, if anyone in council does not vote in support of it, it doesn't mean they don't support you. That's one of the very demotic interpretations of something like that. And the only thing that can help us communicate our community is you to, when you walk out, any specific councilmember who maybe doesn't vote for it, please don't demonize that person, think of their community. It's just, you heard what they said. They see a conflict that they bring their perspective, that's it. It doesn't mean they're against you. I know it is not, it's believable. I don't think any of them are at all.
Councilmember?
I think, you know, words matter. And even the, you know, flag versus ribbon wall versus, you know, so there's an opportunity for all of us to, you know, how we communicate. I think, I appreciate what Mayor Fertan said in terms of political versus, you know, symbols matter. Symbols can be interpreted different ways or in context. But one thing I was going to add, this is part of the final installation, during this forum and other public forums, we've heard a lot about, you know, what the colors mean. You know, it can do, it's not too hard to sort of look into the history, how it evolved, what they represent, many of the same things that we've put in the cultural policy around nature and love and community and unity and, and all of which are a powerful positive positive thing. So, I also see this as an opportunity beyond dialogue and educational. Hopefully we'll have some signage or signboard or educational, you know, plexiglass, what it means along with some of what often, sorry, I'm on my communicated today in terms of the trends of nature of art and interpretation. So, again, just, I think that's sort of, would even be a bonus to sort of add in context and beyond what other individual interpretations of that were.
Any other counts? With counsel, someone in council, make a motion.
I'm going to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four dash seventeen, the public art project recommendation regarding the pride ribbon public art project as presented by the Duval Cultural Commissioner.
It's been moved in the second, is there any further discussion? Councilmember?
Just to reiterate what John said, so I'll go quickly. A vote against this particular bill is not against the LGBTQ community by any means and does not show lax support for that, for that community. It simply is a vote against this particular bill for the reasons that I previously gave.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I therefore you please take your own private.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Isaacson? Mr. Schaefer?
Nay.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Saul?
Aye.
Ms. Knoplin?
Nay.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Guys?
Thank you very much. And I will take a, if Council, okay, take a point of personal privilege to address this now. I wanted to thank each and every individual that has provided feedback and comment to the city. When I look at government, I look at government's responsibility is to be inclusive of all Americans, period. And that was making sure that marginalized communities are supported by the government. This policy, this opportunity for this installation is a clear message to the members of the LGBTQIA+ community and our community and beyond that our government supports them and that they are welcome here. It provides the opportunity to have dialogue and create the only reason there is division about support overall amongst individuals, I'm not talking referring to City Council, is fear, religion, and personal opinion. As the United States, all people, while it was created as all men, all people are created equal and they need to be treated as civil supporters. This issue is also personal to me. I have a niece who went through hell as a teenager. We are lucky that she is still with us today after many of the phone calls that I had with her in secret. So, remember her family did not hear from another state. We, as a city, would not, would never have been here twenty years ago. When I moved here, this discussion could not have occurred. We could not have even gotten this item discussed at the council. I say that to bring attention to the fact that we have received comments, including in the last twenty-four hours, of, I just want the city to be the way it was twenty years ago. If a city isn't growing, it's dying. It's sticking in its old ways, it's not growing, it's not learning. And I believe that by creating this awareness, having these discussions and even disagreements, that we are exemplifying the change and the growth of communities as they should be. We just left Black History Month. Wasn't that long ago that black people in our community could not own houses? They couldn't get mortgages, you had redlining. We had all sorts of these items that made this group of people that are integral, veterans, nurses, teachers, doctors, lawyers. Be lesser than, that's in many of our generation. Not that long ago in Washington State, members of the LGBTQIA+ community did not have full rights in Washington State. This, I think, is a really stunning, a really strong example that we as a community support equality for all of our residents. And to many of the comments that have been made this evening, especially for marginalized communities where there is significant abuse for many of them, both in their homes and externally. For those that haven't seen the news, just recently, a transgender individual from the city or from Boeing has filed a lawsuit because of his treatment and sexual assault at work. That is happening in Washington State today. These are very real human issues. As was mentioned multiple times during the course of public meetings over the course of the last several months, the self-murder rate, the suicide rate for this marginalized, misunderstood community is extraordinary high. And having something that people can look at that does say, I'm accepted, that people care about me. This local government is not going to take actions against my safety. This local government is a place where I can go and get an employment and expect to not be discriminated against or harassed or abused is huge. This isn't political. This is about. Human life. And the right of every human to be accepted for who they are. No matter what that was. I'm incredibly proud of how far this city's come despite the challenges that we faced. And incredibly grateful for the City Council for approving. The art policy and all of the accompanying things that will make sure that we are able to represent not just LGBTQIA plus community. But bring art in from. Our indigenous tribes and many others of those people and groups. Who have not been elevated in our community historically. But yet. Are integral to the success and feeling of community and diversity. And overall. Good feeling that people get when they come to Duval. I especially want to thank our city administrator Cynthia McNabb. While there has been a lot of work at City Council and Mayor's Office and staff on this, no one. Has worked harder, been more deliberate. And more caring and thoughtful about. How to show the city's support, how to. How to. Be accepting of people in our community. And see this through in a positive, non-political way. So with that, um, thank you all, this is a huge step forward for our community. Um, and I believe that. Our community will continue to grow. Have more understanding and be more accepting of those marginalized people and groups within our community, so thank you all. Um. I can't say anymore else, I will get emotional, so thank you, um, this is huge and thank you all for all of your. Comments, support, and sharing your very personal stories with us and the city of Duval. Uh, we will go ahead and move on to our next Agenda Bill. Twenty four dash eighteen, Digra Ball Field Design Project.
Exciting, the mayor, council, status, do you want to share the public works? For prepare my laptop as a parish. If you need anything, I would just ask you to maybe go to the agenda item and, uh, you're gonna do it on the image on the floor. Anything I know? Uh, this is a packet, uh, we're very excited to provide a contract proposal from Bruce Dean and Associates for the full design of the Digra Ball Field, okay, two. Uh, with the amount of funds, uh, from income use support and a hundred thousand dollar grant. Uh, the current proposal here is a five hundred ninety-four thousand and five dollars design fee. Of that, there is a new element. Relative to real estate acquisition for additional purchases. Uh, that's on page seventeen, of the five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four are attributed to the additional land. Uh, which is part of another grant that the city has procured from the incoming. Conservation Districts. For one point four million and change for additional property acquisition. Uh, those, those land are condition, being maxed at all amount of fifteen percent. So with that said, we are hoping to first, uh, phase in contract as work on land acquisition. So then we can determine where trails can be displaced off of the site of the property itself, so that we can. Establish the maximum usability of the property and include. A trail of other soft surface features outside the ten acres that we're considering. Uh, we have gone through extensive. Planning, arts, and particip- whole participation, uh, first phase. Worked in twenty, uh, one, two concepts worth it all. Um, there is a wetland on the property, so, uh, page four, John. Page, sorry, say again, three, four, I have you. Yeah, so, yeah, but it is concept A. Which is a newly multi, new multi, we need multi-use field, um, we eat portion of the new property as well as. Propose to deal her synthetic and like hold the new field and existing concrete. That will give us two new fields in a sense, uh, the usability of the, the craft and that correctly called is fairly low. Um, we did have the consultant do an analysis as it's grabbing the Agenda Bill, make a whole of searches for a city art side. Uh, there is concept B, which had another. Or field in the area where there is a well in, which is kind of right in the middle of, of light blue shading on the. Bottom left part of the screen, um. Permitting and other constraints along the multitude of other uses folks wanted, and we went through the, you know, a lot of the follow-up. Survey process with, so this layout is that, uh. Consultants that are, I think, doing great here with this, most of the maximum. With that said, I don't have a lot of other information items to present, I'm more happy to keep questioning. We'd be more than excited to get in contact with this, this is possible, so.
Councilmember Schaefer.
First of all, thanks, it's sort of, it's a question on what you said about the baseball field. You said it had limited use, you can talk about the new one on the bottom, no, the existing one, oh, okay, this is, whether. Only used in daylight hours, or does not have light now. And then it's. Craft and. Uh, left requested you use by the. Okay, and the new one will be, uh.
Councilmember, Mayor Fortham, and Councilmember Knapplin.
Um, yeah, I know you had mentioned before, and it, maybe this isn't the right point, so in terms of a different one, so just let me know, but, um, you talked about before trying to maximize use. With the size, but also different painting of the lines, and maybe that's not a part of this process, or it will be, but I know you've mentioned cricket before, I recently got an email about cricket, and so I wanted to ask, will any of you potentially be used before cricket? Or is it not quite at that point yet?
Uh, we have talked about it, I do not, I do apologize, I don't know the exact minimum. However, they have rented field one as a group in the past.
Okay.
Um. Yes, cricket is to me, I do, I do understand we have a new cricket team, and that continues to the CLR, so, uh, hopefully. We will certainly talk about it.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Knapplin and then Councilmember Isaacson.
Hey, I just want to say thank you for answering my questions, um, I didn't necessarily expect them in advance, I was just hoping we could, um. Touch on them, um, in the meeting tonight, thank you. On the acquisition, um, I'm thrilled that will convert, because I'd love to see, even if on the fringes. Where the wetland isn't, you know, maybe on the south end side, there could be another location that. Another amenity could be added in the future, um. I have been approached by many, many, many people saying, oh, I wish we had some kind of cover or indoor or just somewhere, we're doing the winter. There's a place, um. I, you had mentioned, um, I got a public partnerships, I don't know if this is anything anyone is interested in, but, um. Up at Redmond Ridge at the ballpark, they do have a partnership, um, and they have a small indoor facility up there, like, I. It's interesting that you said like now is the time, if that kind of conversation, um, wanted to happen, I'm not really sure. How that could move forward, also, um. Yeah, maybe out of the PTO S planning, there could be some more input, but I have heard it again and again, um. Winters are long and dark and wet. And there's not a lot of places for, um, you know, kids or really anyone to get out of the weather, and I think being outside, even when it's cold is good. But being in the rain is kind of a. Um, so, then the other, um, comments I had. Uh, field one, um, it was mentioned that the little league president who at the time, when the rental being provided, um, happened to be my husband. And the reason that he was the one making those. Stressation with field one is because he was getting that feedback from the coaches, that that field was really problematic, um. The way the sun set, it just sets just perfectly, that it's in the eyes of the batter for actually quite a long period of time, and I, I understand that. You know, as we get lights put there, it could extend the hours later, so there'd be more available, but, um. Uh, more recently, I've heard from several other, um, coaches and the current president who has brought that up to me, again, just. About they have the stop games, um, said this is, you know, we're gonna have to pause, because it's just not, and. I don't know that there's a great solution, but, um, any effort that we could, you know, fast-growing treat is right there. You know, in the out, um, beyond the outfield or something, um. Because it, it has been brought up a lot in the baseball community about how problematic that is and the safety, um, issue that that presents. And I think that's, those are the comments, I'm super excited about this project, um. It's our community really, really, really needs it and wants it, so, um, I'm completely in favor of moving this forward.
Councilmember Isaacson.
The, I don't know if you're just Mr. Verbering. Symbols, I think I am, when I look around, but sure, and you go here, you know, right now. The party, we all know, and part of the problem is it's. In and out, it's going the way of an arrow road, but this layout is, is their plan to make this one way and. So they want to come in one half, other, well, that's the other with an arrow, number thirteen. I'm not sure if that's that similar in order to that, the plan, if not, is it something to be considered in, in maybe even changing the apartment re-angled. So that would facilitate that.
Yeah, this is by no means a, a full design, it is a concept level design, um. Whether we are looped, you know, one way all the way through, or somehow able to create another drive alley into the front and out south. Or section, all, all the things we look at for here, maximizing parking is obviously priority number one. Um, creating many things, priority number two, and then of course, one field, we're gonna agree, the south end, um. Not to get way ahead, but that is where there's a massive band of everybody, we're probably going nowhere, the trails and other elements can be added to that. There are a lot of other, older and conwood, um, the look of the property, which is good news for development activities. And then there are other considerations for development, still in county, leave it in the county, and in the city, Florida's been sending information on the counties, uh. Their own environmental regulations have been, so we have a lot of things to wait, but. Yeah, so we're really excited, uh, the, the consultant team is, you know, ready to go and. They're excited to be, you know, involved. I think one of my favorite parks in the region is Perrigo Park, and they're, they're the designer of Perrigo Park, so there's, they understand the whole few elements that you. Could have a field. To the park, that ball field. Yeah, uh, structures and things of those nature, and then we have a, if you go through the packet, there's the all of card items. Point ahead, all the card items, um, yeah, communities bodies and, I think, mountain, and with college, and still like for grants, and things like that, but. I'm doing our PTO S plan, uh, adopted, but I'd say we are in all the goal for some of the arts field, none of the grants, even the, uh. Brand.
I'm gonna ask for any other comments before we go back around. Councilmember.
Yeah, the parking comment just reminded me of another, um, that I had mentioned. You go to any baseball park, the, the section right there along, um. Uh, the field for parking will be empty until the end, because no one wants their party at faulted, so anyway, there can be more, more distance potentially. Between the parking and, um, the baselines. Preferential.
Any other discussion, would council like to report this this evening? Mayor Fortham.
Um, I'm going to approve Agenda Bill twenty four dash eighteen, operating the merit assigned in the consulting agreement with Bruce Dean and Associates for five hundred ninety-four. Thousand and five dollars for the design construction documents and bidding needs as outlined in Exhibit A.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, moving on to existing business, which Agenda Bill twenty four dash zero one for Hope Lake County, I'm a liberal. Um, city administrator.
Um, yes, uh, good evening, we're taking a look at the, um, public records policy. Um, so we're on, uh, another round of review and comments, uh, based on comments that we've received on. The twentieth. And then I believe the seventeenth as well of February, so I've taken those comments. I annotated the, uh, prior draft of the public records policy and then included. Uh, city attorney Daniel Kenny, as well as city attorney Andrews Soming, who, uh, was responsible for. All the legal review of the public arts policy, or public records policy, rather. Uh, so the goal of tonight is to just go through those comments, and I'll see full feedback. Uh, get to a place where I can clean it up and then bring it back to council. Uh, for an additional time, if there's any other questions, uh, so if, um. Your approval, mayor, I'll just proceed with the comments, and clerk, if you could bring it up, um. Uh, so the first comment we received is related to amending the rules, so, um, as it was written, uh, initially, and then revised by our city attorney. There's a section on, uh, the city administrator being authorized to amend the policy. As necessary if it becomes out of compliance with the RCW. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Knapplin offered a couple of potential revisions. Um, so those have been annotated there in, uh, on the comment side. Well, we received two comments from our city attorneys, one, which was, uh, taking policy to council is of course best practice. Um, however, in this case, it's critical in this specific area, the RCW and the public records act. That the city become immediately compliant, since there is a potential daily fines if you are out of compliance. Um, a potential option is to add language to the policy that requires the city administrator to bring the policy back to council within X number of meetings. Or a time period, um. Uh, if there is a change, uh, to the policy to bring it back into compliance. And then those kind of safe supplements were provided by attorney Soming, um. Which was, um, city administration would ideally have the time and ability to swiftly change the policy to bring the policy into compliance. Um, so that is the requested change in the comments back from the city attorney.
So on this one, looking for how council would like to proceed.
Councilmember, we're starting to revisit my earlier comment, uh, we're, I mean, I think that was my primary concern as well, as it's sort of that push and pull between guidance and policy and then. Assuring because of. Council is ultimately responsible, if we're out of compliance, making sure that there was that. Reporting requirements, you can sign off for grant approval, I think sometimes they can be done retroactively and obviously can always. You know, turn around and revisit, but, but that was, I think, my primary concern, that it's sort of after council member, um, that one, I don't know if there was specific. It didn't sound like there was specific guidance frame. Attorney Kenny in terms of. What that could be next meeting, meetings within six weeks, and there's, I know probably something in code in terms of bringing. Compliance, but, you know, after sort of you, I think, is that the specific reporting requirements?
Um, I think from, uh, attorney Kenny's perspective, you know, within the next three meetings would be reasonable, I believe. After that was our discussion, um, because you would. Need to revise the policy and then, you know, prepare to get it to council, but certainly probably no more than. The next second or third meeting, um, so, you know, certainly, I think, bringing it back to council would be important, we could see the change, um, but both the attorneys' decisions reflect, you know, we're gonna get to.
Councilmember.
Yeah, um, so. Andrew, how can you pronounce?
Uh, Soing.
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 Soing. Just see that, um, I need, okay. Um, his last sentence said, my preference is either not change the current language or use the last proposed book. Um his last sentence said, my preference is either not change the current language or use the last proposed alternative. Which allows administration to amend the policy only if it is bound to be out of compliance with the law. And so that third suggestion was um one of the options I had kind of provided that made me feel more comfortable um. Since best practice is bringing as uh General Kenny um mentioned that taking policy back to council is the best practice. Um although it's uh critical that we are always fully in compliance with the law. And so I feel like that option provides the best balance um for me with my comfort level. Is to put in there a little um. Statement that says that administration can modify the policy if it is bound to be out of compliance with the law. Um so I don't know if uh. We may be on at a point to make a motion or I don't know exactly how we're working through this. Um so let me know. Um so I guess the question I would have is how is that change different than the current language, which reads. The city administrator is authorized to amend the policy as necessary to remain in compliance with evolving law, governing, handling of. Public record or public records request and to update this policy as facts may require. Is the request to kind of take off that last clause and to update this policy as facts may require because the first clause. Basically says the city administrator is authorized to amend it for one purpose, which is to bring it into compliance. Yes, I feel the same is that I it got a little fuzzy with that last little phrase because that felt it could be interpreted very broadly. And so I would say if we could um. Uh remove that part, make it less broad, I would.
Councilmember.
Well, I don't have any objection to the way it's written, just because. Um. I don't think if the city administrator changes it to be in compliance with the law, that the city council. Is going to come back and say, no, we don't accept your revision.
I don't know.
I don't ever see that happen, so I don't see any objection, any objection to the way it's written.
Yeah, I was gonna, my question was exactly what the city administrator said because I I read it that way. And so I wondered if it's and to update this policy as facts may require makes it fuzzy, though I feel like the intent of that last sentence just makes it a little more flowery like. Because it's all in the same sentence. So but if that's causing any, you know, confusion or concern, I think, I mean, it seems like it would be the same. Just delete that little section of the sentence um because I feel like the intention is. Update this policy as back to their car in like in regards to the laws changed, we need to change our policies up. And then just to follow up really quick on the amendments, the being reported to city council, I mean, I'm comfortable with it as it's written. If we want to put some kind of timeframe on that, that would be fine with me as well as long as it's reasonable timeframe to staff.
Councilmember Isaacson.
I'm just on right to like, I think we delete the ending of that thing and update, I think it should. Everyone wants the same thing. I think that we don't accidentally make changes with thoughts that are back here to make the change and should it consider council, there's no time around. Law requires and we make a change in my.
Yeah, I would be happy to take that clause out. Um ultimately, uh neither the clerk nor myself really want to spend. Time updating this policy for any other reason other than compliance with the law. I mean. We've gone through significant effort to bring this policy forward and to update it and um. Just from an expedient perspective, I think we'd like to do it and leave it unless we're required to change it.
So any other counsel, I just want to make a note um that uh while this group may not. Turn down a city administrator's request for a policy change um that's required by law, it happens all the time. In city government and local government throughout the country. Um where laws will change and city councils will choose not to change the law and be out of compliance, putting the jurisdiction difference. Um I think the other thing just to to think about as well um is that sometimes the law doesn't change, but court rulings change what you have to with your policy. So my preference is to make sure that there is that flexibility and if it's a defining plot or court rulings. Um that would be fine, but I would be very concerned about having to, you know, there. Multiple factors of leaving something that is very prescriptive by law or. To elected body if you don't have to, because you don't. I'm very strong in trying to future group um and make sure that the city is protected in the long run, um in that decisions are. Non-political as possible, especially when it comes to this type of work. So I just wanted to throw that there um. I think even since I've been in city council, the council's made rep made decisions. Which many recommendations, so um it does happen. So just to throw that out there, um trying to be realistic and transparent with that camp or. Councilmember Isaacson.
Good thing is they, not that they didn't agree with you, but uh. If a court ruling comes out, I don't think and attorney didn't tell me in break, but I don't think we're gonna immediately because of pulling up and. Starting current time, they might be, that would be a law, we call it that. True or no?
Uh it depends. In this area of law, um quickly after court ruling, but before the R C W is amended. Potentially.
Very. Maybe we do a special council if we need to do that, right?
Yeah, I think I think from a practical standpoint, a city would have a reasonable, an agency would have a reasonable period of time to respond to. Uh a court ruling, but we don't know how much time that is. That's going to be something that gets looked at in hindsight. And so the ability to act quickly is important, but to your point, it doesn't have to necessarily be the day after the ruling comes.
Um I believe I'm hearing consensus to take out that clause here. Yeah. Um all right, the next request is on page seven. Which is under G of. Public records officers processing and public records request. Um so. So the top of the premise of.
Yeah, on the P D F.
It is, sorry. Okay, um it's time to see what page it is marked. Oh, yeah, there. Um notify request for categorization of requests, allow for modification of requests in category. For example, if requests are simplified, clarified by the requester. Um so I would say this is our practice, particularly if we get a public records request that is extremely voluminous. We will contact the requestor to say, did you really mean this? Um because if you really meant it. Uh you you might not get your records for quite some time. Um so I'm not sure that I understand what the. Request is notify request or categorization of requests. Yeah, I guess um if someone was observing the policy or kind of watching how requests get prioritized. They would want to know if they ended up in a category five, y- you know, and and be like, oh, I didn't intend for that. Can I simplify it? Because it's not just. It's understanding the consequences of having a more comfortable weekend on and having the opportunity to simplify it and that there's no damage to applying it. Um I don't know, there's a lot, there's information provided back when you acknowledge the request and. So I guess that would just be the piece of information. That could be included in the acknowledgement of the request. Um so the way public records requests work is the five day acknowledgement is. Um a very simple acknowledgement of the request to come into immediate compliance with the R C W. Uh there is correspondence after the five day notification that works with the requester to say. The the five day letter is we have to acknowledge a request within five days, but that did not. I don't mean to make it sound like it's perfunctory, but in a way it's perfunctory. That is not correspondence um often that really gets to the heart of whether a person made. An extremely voluminous request. We will often, after the five day. Letter go back and say, hey, we've started this request. We've started to, you know, take a look at it and. It's going to be two months, three months, four months until you get your records to play on the complexity of the request. But it it would be very difficult for staff to make that five day notice letter more complex than. Essentially what it is, which is an an acknowledgement of a request. It's a form. So what about that little section three? Does that, do you see the section that under acknowledging requests? So it's not the five day, it's more. Um goes, you went down. I'm wondering if that's the section that I'm kind of talking about where it gives the person the opportunity to clarify. To go down. When I talked about. Talked about clarifying, allowing someone to clarify their request. Um I would say your suggestion is redundant of the language that's already in there. So um they'll be told if they're like a one through five. You know what I mean? So um we will, after the five day letter, communicate when we expect. To be able to comply with the request and anytime and it happens, I would say on a weekly basis. The request will write back to the city to say, oh, I I want my documents faster. So instead of asking for five years of documents, I would like three months of documents. That happens regularly routinely in normal courses. So is the category really just an internal thing and that would never be disclosed what category you're in? So. I don't do the person always, so it might be um but. I I I personally don't see the comment as adding anything to the process of public.
And I'm going to ask council to stick to the one question and let others go, please, um as our roles state, so. Uh mayor first, and then councilmember Mercer.
I think for me, um you know, I don't see a problem with adding something additional, but I lean toward not here because. My understanding, now I'm thinking I actually need to go file some public records because I've never done. Um just my experience. Yeah. Uh so but I'm just thinking like in practicality, it's. Each request is so unique and could be completely different. And so I think what's here might be sufficient and it would be really hard to. Address all the different possible ways somebody could roll in with a request. Um and I feel like how it's always how I've always heard it's been done and then whatever current. Um clerk now too is that, you know, there is a lot of correspondence with the requestor and I think anytime. A clerk can make it easier for someone or make it less like, is this really what you want? Because this is what it might end up being. And they're like, oh, no, 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 I didn't mean that. Um it seems like there is a natural flow to communicating with people to figure out what they're trying to get so that we can help them get what they actually want and not just like five million P D F pages, but. Um I I feel like what's here is sufficient, but like I said, if it's just a minor addition somewhere, I just wasn't, I'm a little confused about. The benefit it's adding and that it's not already potentially done if needed. Thank you.
It's a sort of a short comment. I mean, it's similar, it's somewhat because what Mayor for Tim said, I think. I think there is some of it very similar to what we were talking about um. The the earlier policy changes, there's some individual responsibility around time and I think there's an expectation if you ask for. Five years, that's more involved than asking for two weeks, you know, if. Uh I think the clerk has an opportunity as part of that engagement to provide some. Framing around that request, you know, this could involve up to a thousand records or, you know, based on, but but sometimes I think, John, you won't know that until you actually start to. To pull back that, but by the month, at the same time, I'm hesitant about putting too much additional process on top because then it just simply expands because you have more. Um milestones you need to go through to fulfill the request. I'd rather keep it simple and and and, you know, build a culture within the court's office. To to, you know, communicate the scope of the request back to the requestor. Again, so I'm kind of echoing what Mayor for Tim said is, I think these are valid points that have been been pointed out, but I think many of them can be addressed. Through that and along the request.
Councilmember Isaacson.
I, to my mind, reading this, all we as the conference team is, the this the staff. Acknowledging that they got in the class and if. One or more of the following, there's. Three, four options and I I don't think we need to add anything else to it. It just depends on. Is what kind of. Response or does it get, and that's not going to be the last communication without. So. My. Reading. Thank you.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Okay, so to try to understand a councilor, that one is concerned, in many terms, ensuring responses to. You know, honor that concern and make sure I'm covering it all, honor that concern as well, that. What I'm hearing you say is, the way the process is, someone sends their request, say I've sent a request and I did it in a way. Unintentionally, it's going to be an exceptionally vertical and fast and or cost me an excessive amount of money and or take a lot longer for me to get one. That first response within five days, a form letter to say, hey, I got your spot. That's that's, yeah, well, it could be more, be one more of those things. So ultimately, if I did that mistakenly, would you be able to work with me and say. Uh this is going to cost you a whole bunch of money and take a lot of time. Will I have the ability to report you at that time and then say, oh, I want to change this? Or do I get stuck with that?
Uh yeah, well, um no, you don't get stuck with that. So if we believe that the request was made in overbroad response. We provide not only the five day notice letter, but we also provide notice of when we think we can get to the response and complete it. And then we provide monthly updates anywhere along the process. So we have one information request right now. That is extremely broad and every month we provide an installment date on how long that's going to take. That request or anytime could say. You know what? I have all that I need. I can close my information request or any point they could have said. Hey, you're estimating to meet this, it is going to take nine months. I'm going to narrow my request to three months because it's the thing that I really care about. We, I I'm going to turn it over to the clerk, but John, you probably have that conversation every day.
Um yes, very much. I mean, um if this call just seems too large or too. Too broad, then um before I can proceed, I just. Communicate with the person just to make sure that I understand the request and that. Um, you know, did you really mean to ask for N gigs worth of information or um. Is this what you're looking for? I provide out. So then the person can come back and say, no, you know what? That's what I meant. Or no, this is what I really want. And then that narrows it down and based on. The updated request and I can go back and say, okay, well, based on this request, I think that this might take X amount of. Time uh to get it off.
But I want to make sure all councilmembers have an opportunity to speak to this. Councilmember Schaefer and Russell, do you have anything? Okay, we'll go back to councilwoman Renethan.
I just want to say I'm willing to rescind this. It's the full categorization and levels is a new thing and I just. Wanted to make sure that requesters were transparent. You know, with the time estimates and the implications of broad requests. And so it sounds like there's already a. You know, a process in place to make sure um that people can make their documents if they accidentally make a super broad request. And I would say we get a super broad request several times. Okay, yeah, I'm totally fine for sending that. Um okay, so the next set of comments is in section nine, record request queues. So this, the first comment is the notify notify request for categorization. So I think we've dealt with that. So this, the first comment is the notify, notify request for categorization. So I think we've dealt with that. The second, um, comment is provide a report of public records request queues to council periodically, both the ones that are progress and both, uh, and second, completed requests since the last report, if not available. Um, and we don't, we, we keep a sales spreadsheet of public records requests. We can drop it into the council.
I mean, by my, um, this is one of the things that the new public record request portal would resolve on some. So if you had an inquiry as to, I wonder how long, how many public records requests are open? Just visit in the portal and going through the requests will give you an idea of what requests are open, how long have they been open for, and, um, also, well, what type of requests they are. So it'll just do it on its own.
And just a quick comment, if I may, um, one of my long-term goals is actually to have all of the produced public record requests available online. Um, that does multiple things. It increases the transparency of who's, who's requesting what, what information is coming out. Um, and it also, um, reduces the number of public language requests received in the online because that information is. Um, it's not a popular, um, policy decision, or I should say operational decision. Uh, but it's one that I believe strongly in for the long-term transparency of the local government. Um, and the software that we now have, um, is going to be helped with that, um, over the long run. Um, Captain, Mayor Forcham, McKinney.
Um, yeah, I was just going to say, then, then it kind of, I don't know, maybe it's at this point. But since you're saying we can just drop that and, you know, share that and then it's going to eventually, it's going to be a part of that portal and it's going to happen for that reason, I just probably wouldn't want to have anything here.
All right, Councilwoman Renethan.
Yeah, I'm fine not having that. If it's, if it's imminent and just verbally kind of in the meantime, if council could just get an idea of, you know, that report one can allow to be kind of keep an eye on it. I don't know how, I don't know how much longer before that portal is operational and, and available.
Um, the portal is waiting on this policy. It's real.
So it, there would be, it would be launched on the website? You'd start seeing it right away?
Uh, the portal will be launched on the website right away. It's largely configured.
Exciting. Great.
Um, okay, so the next, um, set of comments are the number eleven, inspection of records. Um, so there are two issues. The easier one is, um, to make a reference that anyone coming to inspect records can take pictures with their personal camera. Um, there's no, attorneys didn't have an issue with that. So that's an easy. So I think there's some confusion and I will share that I am confused about what the ask is here on additional language for making it clear that requesters coming in to inspect records can inspect the records for free. So I, I would ask, I, Councilmember Nelson, I'm not sure that I understand your comments here and what the asks are.
I can explain it. So if, it's not that I don't think we should charge for copies or electronic copies. Um, we have a fee schedule and I can fully in support of that. But if you look at the City of Isipaw fee schedule, it will show you, it will write down. If you just want to inspect the records in person, there's no charge. You aren't being charged for any copy. It's only if you want to take those copies or if you want them to be emailed to you, for example, or a flash drive, um, the, maybe you could explain it better, but the, from my understanding, state law says, is very clear about there not being a charge for, um, gathering the records, um, any of the work related to gathering the records, or even if someone wants to inspect the records, unless it's that very small customized service charge where you're, you have a giant database and someone wants some numbers from the database and you don't have a current report that extracts it. You might have to do some kind of customized extract. Other than that, the gathering of record, my understanding is there's no charge and you can inspect them for free, only if you get copies.
Yeah, uh, really quick though, where do you think in the policy it says that we will charge for inspecting? That's a part I'm confused by. I don't think that language is here.
I don't think it is either, but like, for example, the City of Isipaw is very explicit in stating that there is no charge for that. It's, um.
So is that the request that we? Um, so I know there's a request on the B schedule to say that we mirror a surplus language that says there is no fee for inspecting records. Do you also want that in this policy?
Um, I have seen it in other policies and I, I think that it would be nice to have it mirrored in both places.
Oh, no worries. I mean, on that issue, I think either way is fine from a legal standpoint in the sense that the policy as written is compliant and it would be the council's discretion whether they wanted to have an explicit statement in the policy in addition to what's in the, the, the B schedule.
Um, Councilmember Mercer, this is one again, and, uh, advocate it one way or the other.
To me, it is pretty plain though, because basically it's saying you're only going to be charged if you ask for a copy or a scan of the infected records. I would just interpret it, you're just inspecting, it doesn't have a fee. But not against that, I would just often if you add that, you're going to have to rewrite the sentence to make sense because it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not a problem. Um, I, I have been confused by this dialogue because I didn't think the policy said anywhere that we would charge for inspecting.
Yeah, I, I don't think I was saying that that needed to be, there needed to be some removed language that was incorrect. It was, uh, I think I, I guess I should read that part, but I, I think I tried several times to just say that I wanted it to be stated that there is no charge for the locating and inspection of record, not that there was a misstatement.
Your turn, Mr. Smith.
Good answer. Question, that is first. Please, when you compile all the records, how would someone inspect that? Do you print them all and inspect them? Maybe they want to write it? Or do you do a?
I've never had a situation when someone says, I want to inspect the documents. Um, it's either send them to me printed or send it to me electronically.
Amy McKinney, is it okay if I make a note? Um, so, so the clerk's point, um, we've had plenty of public records requests where extensive work is done, flash drives are created and the public records requests are never picked up. In my experience over the last twenty years, public records requests, especially voluminous requests, which is where you get the big volumes of records typically, they don't want to be in city hall when they're inspecting records. Um, they want to be in the privacy of their own home. They want to be able to hold them or their office. They want to be able to take it on their own time, make their own notes. And if it is, and particularly a large request, um, if they're just physically inspecting the records, there's no point in asking for the records request to begin with. So, um, I've never heard of a single time in twenty plus years in state, county or local government of anyone wanting to, um, to physically inspect records unless it's a document such as an E I S. So, the Englishman, and then Mayor Forcham.
I mean, in theory, people could come and ask to come to city hall and open the file cabinet and inspect everything. Now, if they wanted to do that, we would have to go through it and make sure that we took out anything that wasn't disposable. But in theory, somebody could do that. Um, I mean, I don't know that it would happen often, um, but you could, they could do that. Um, in that case though, we wouldn't produce the public record, we wouldn't reproduce it. We would say, hey, we've looked through the cabinet, we've looked at attorney client for lit communication or something that's exempt from public disclosure and then sit with the file cabinet if you want. Um, it would only be if then they want to make copies of what was in the public, there would be charges.
Yes, and then after they keep us chugging along, um, I, I think, I read it, I think the way it was intended, which is you can inspect them, you're not charged unless you want to make copies or scans or whatever. You can use your personal device. I think there's that. Um, or about adding that, I, I, I know I read that somewhere. But anyways, if, if the rest of the council, if there's a consensus to wordsmith it and make it more clear, I also support that. I just, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of, I don't opposition to this, I guess. Like, I think either it's the same, it, it reads fine. Um, or if everyone thinks, yeah, we can make it a little more clear, I say, let's do it. But I think it's a lot of discussion on this.
And then, um, we are at cast nine thirty, so we need to have our motion to extend this meeting beyond nine thirty.
I'll move to extend beyond nine thirty. Great. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, councilor rises.
So, yeah, but to get us moving, at the end of that sentence, I think we've already just stated, however common inspection only, there are charges. Period. And we move on.
Yeah.
We're all thinking, so can we use that instance?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that is it. Let me just double check though.
There was a couple of them.
Oh, yeah.
Super.
No fee for, it's the same if you're locating and inspecting records. Um, I, I would ask, uh, I don't remember, is there an objection, uh, to Andrew Somi's comment? Is that specialized charge?
Yeah, that one. Unless it's subject to the last night, there was charge.
Okay.
Yeah. Got it, huh?
Um, I think that's it. So next step will be for me to, um, change the language at it. And my intent is to put it on consent for the next meeting unless there's any objection.
Seeing none. Okay, great, thank you. Um, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-four dot twelve, ordinance on updates to the building code for discussion and decision. Director Thomas, Mayor Forcham, Community Development, and Brian Kaylin are building in fish.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers of the community. Uh, tonight is the last day we'll bring forward the building code amendments. And this is our opportunity to approve them this evening. Uh, they will become implemented on March fifteenth. The state then D S B, I think we wrote Senate Bill sixty-four and twenty last Friday. Uh, the House and the Senate bills still are not the same, so that probably have to be some reconciliation of the bill. The way we draft in our policy is that we, that we adopt whatever state is adopting. So we're good. I think the good news though is out of that, so is that it did relieve us of, um, the portion and what we call the woolly, the wildland woolly general face code. So that defensible space is no longer in that policy, which was a major concern that we shared with A W C. So that was really good, I think, for all cities and counties. Um, some other, you know, interesting news is that they're going to do some more mapping exercises and they're going to allow cities to do their D N R does their mapping. So that was a little bit probably questionable. We probably would not extend our own city dollars to the mapping. We would probably wait for the mapping to be done like D N R. So that maybe we would use their existing maps and tell that plan happens. And my guess is that we wish nothing happened. So that's the one thing we wish had been clarified a little bit more, but it wasn't, I guess, the right time or place at the legislative level. But we are prepared to implement the rules. And we actually gave you a little card this evening that's on, on all the councilmember desks. So we've already been putting information out to our community and the development agents that we can prepare everybody for these changes. That's not just wildland, it's fire code, it's building code, it's energy code. But, but we're ready. So this evening we're asking you to adopt the amendments.
Councilwoman Rosenthal.
I'm ready to move on. Clear to me that we, uh, certainly didn't, but certain meanings specific, like the law of the minute, you know, our code is more restricted substantially than state law, right? Everything is only state law.
Correct.
Any other questions or councilman connection, Mayor Forcham?
I want to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four dot twelve, the ordinance of the city council of Newbal approving chapter ten, uh, O R.
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to our final agenda, Agenda Bill twenty-four dot eighteen, ordinance on mobile food units. Discussion or motion? Councilwoman Rosenthal.
So we, uh, do you remember making, uh, comments about, uh, this was possibly going to make it harder for them based on previous contracts that they had given to the city? Can we address that before we move on and say, is it through signal, not through?
Um, so we have the contracts and the parking agreements and, uh, like the commenter said, the, the contractual arrangement between D F A and the city and the developer is quite a full interest. Um, the issue about whether D F A can get a waiver of the food truck ordinance is slightly different than whether we should adopt a food truck ordinance. And that we can pick up after all the attorneys, look at the agreements. Um, we can always do an exception if there's some type of reason.
I got a follow-up question if I can, but.
Well, we'll check with the other councilmembers first. Seeing them, go ahead.
Question clear. It's what I heard you say was, we're going to knock this tonight and all it would take is a waiver for the waiver, where you go back to the contracts with D F A and say, yes, and we can issue you a waiver. Correct. Okay. And that.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. I think it makes sense. I, I've been to a couple different times. But, but the other day I stumbled across it on a walk and, um, I've been to a, a performance there from Cascade Community Theater. And I really think it added to that, um, you know, just the community feel of having the food truck and people able to get some refreshments. And so, um, I just don't want to make that overly burdensome um, for their group if that's something they want to have done. Um, and that kind of goes back into the do I need to have another question? It's kind of related.
Um, okay, you had your question, you asked the answer. Does anyone else have any other questions? Uh, Mayor Forcham.
I, I just wanted to say like, I, I'm open to talking about waivers and stuff like that if that comes to account. So I just wanted to make sure, not just for one group, you have to look at that broader group of organizing, right? Versus like just strictly like, oh, I own this property and I want to have some food trucks and a ballpark and all that. Um, that being said, I feel like because that's not a part of this, like, um, I'm glad we talked about it and you brought it up and the commenter brought it up, but I think we also just need to pass this and it's not necessarily tied to the passing of this too. So.
Um, were you going to say something, Councilwoman Shaver?
Uh, yeah, I'll say something like, uh, hey, instead of talking about potential waivers, I think we should focus on, on passing a hand. Um, you know, a vote on this, uh, on this bill. As we stated many times, the waiver is a little bit.
If you'd like to make a motion, this is something that I'm bringing in.
I, I, okay, uh.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Good second.
Good second. Okay, I will be, uh, pass Agenda Bill twenty-four nineteen, ordinance on mobile food.
Second.
So, yes, you're welcome to ask your question now.
Okay. Um, so I had asked a question about, they brought ballpark, um, the concession stand is very small, just limited to snacks. And so, for example, when a tournament comes in, you know, there really is not sufficient food available on site for an event like that. And I don't think that that's an actual special event. I don't know if there's a special tournament permit. Would they then have to get a special event permit on top of the tournament permit to allow a food truck? I'm just trying to understand what you can think of things like that.
Yeah. Um, so Director Thomas responded to that question, uh, earlier today. I think I sent, it was really this morning, early ish this morning, um, where I sent her response on what the. on what the current rules are with regard to food trucks up the ball field.
There wasn't, I did fully understand how that and probably just misunderstanding. So what I guess I'm trying to understand is a, is there a tournament permit? Is that a type of special event permit? Do you see what I mean? I don't? Or do they have to get a tournament permit? Or do they just rent fields for an entire weekend and there's not a special event permit? That's what I'm trying to understand. Like how that would work.
So currently under the field policy, we do not have a tournament rate yet. Council has not adopted. We can't answer the question about whether or not a tournament, um, fee would include a food truck because we have, one, we haven't adopted the field policy. Two, we don't have a tournament, we don't have any authorization for tournaments at big rock ball field. Yeah, so Director, the answer is a state of existing rules and process for food trucks.
Which means they would have to get.
Um, let's see if anyone else has any questions or feedback on this. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Renethan.
So existing, I'm just trying to understand, existing policy, the way it stands. Person has a tournament, which means they just do regular field rentals that happen to last for three days, two days. And then they would have to separately get a special event permit in order to invite a food truck. And after, do you want me to?
Yes, Director.
So the way our special events are made is worded now, the policy, they would, if a candidate came in and they wanted to do like, um, safe free food trucks, which is not uncommon in the region, they would get a special use of them, they would permit them to do that. The mobile food unit is not geared as a policy towards something where it's just a one Z, two Z. Then this policy is geared for an ongoing use for twelve months. So we wouldn't be doing that on a public facility because then you have to consider lease agreement and some of those other components. So it's a very different type of policy. But we are going to be updating our, um, special event, um, policy within about the next year. So we can put together, kind of like a parking lot list items. But then after the. Great, thanks. Great.
The only way we have honored, uh, turned into through respect on permitting is they are required groups of fifty one.
Hopefully they already do have to get a special.
They did, because they don't have the other network, so they're grouped, because it's a group.
Okay, that's. Okay, that's what I was trying to, thank you.
All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And that, unless.
One great thing, I just wanted to thank our clerk for giving us these later native parliament sheets. And then I had asked him if we were supposed to take them with us or leave them here. Um, and he said it's up to us, so do you, do you think we learn, let it pick them up?
Leave them because.
Some in your files. He gives you come up and then would you, like, if you're willing to send them back out now for each hand? That way we always have them in front of us. Thank you.